Thank you.
Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Here.
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 Okay, thank you. We have no recognitions or ceremonial proclamations. Are there any additions or deletions from the voting session agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
I'd like to make a motion to delete item seven on the agenda, which relates to the funding for the mixed media campaign, dealing with the opioid use. I'd like to make a motion to delete that tonight.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Agenda item number seven is deleted. Any other additions or deletions from the voting session agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Krishnowski, second by Mr. Sabatino. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is adopted. We will now have public comment on voting session agenda items only. Please note that number seven was deleted, so if you were here to speak on that, you'll have to speak at the public comment session at the end of this voting session now. We have Daniel, I'm not sure what this last name is, from Swyersville?
Dan Valant?
Yeah, that's it. Sorry, I couldn't read your last name, sir. You can come up to the podium? Oh, I'm sorry, is it for work session?
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize. All right. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Theodore Fitzgerald, Nannicoe, Newport Township, too. I'm here to speak.
Excuse me, somebody on the Zoom has their... Okay, they're muted. Go ahead, Mr. Fitzgerald, sorry.
Yeah, as far as using the ARP for Luzerne County Fair, I think it's probably one of the biggest wastes of money that we could do ever. I think that LeAnn McDermott brought up a point, and everybody knows that I usually don't agree with a lot of her votes, but I do agree with this one, and anybody that is accusing her of an axe to grind, or whatever that negative comment was, is silly. I think there's two sides of that coin. I think if I was treated the way she was, I would have an axe to grind, too. But if that opened her eyes, and made her work for the public, and made sure the public's tax dollars go to the right things, not because of the politically connected, I come here all the time when I don't like it, when people are not doing the right thing for the right thing to do. The Luzerne County Fair does not need the money. I know we brought a bunch of kids here. I love kids. Another thing is, we're gonna say, "Who doesn't like kids?" Anybody hate kids? Nobody? Everybody love kids? We all love kids. But there's kids that die in ambulances, there's kids that get overdoses that could use it. This money should be spent for the community, not for the rich affluent up in Luzerne. And I know there are kids from all over to come, but in the last few years, I see very little black and Hispanic kids, but I see about 90% white kids. So let's use it for all Luzerne County, because y'all preach all Luzerne County, but it's just a little small space. Also, the other side of that coin, of an axe to grind, is is anybody connected? Has anybody that has got office collected funds from the pews? Have they been invited to their house? Have they gotten getting money from other people? That's gonna come into question. I'm gonna go to the bureau and pull everybody's reports and see if or how much money people have gotten, and how it is, whether it's you guys, Democrat, Republican, also the people that give money to everybody. I'm gonna pull them, see how much money they give, and we're gonna see if people are bought and paid for. So there's a side that there's an axe to grind, but that other side of the coin is who's paid off and who's not, and that's possible. It's not, I'm not saying it's a fact, but it does smell a little stinky, and to push something through is usually trying to get something through. So I really think that, plus, honestly, they are very smart, they can get money other ways. The people that we gave orders to, the people that donated to different campaigns-
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
I'll wrap it up in one second.
Thank you.
And they can call them up and ask for contributions.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Mr. Griffith?
Good evening, Council. I'm gonna speak about item number one regarding the tasers. I see the money's supposed to come out of the general fund, and I just wonder why we can't use the commissary fund for that to try and save the general fund $75,000 of funding. If that money was budgeted in the budget, we could obviously take that $75,000 and allocate it somewhere else. If we can use the commissary fund money for that, that would be helpful for the general fund. That's not a whole lot of money, but $75,000 is substantial into the general fund. So commissary fund has about a half a million or more in it, and I know there's restrictions on that funding, so possibly Council could take a look at that when you have a discussion about taking the money from the commissary fund. I was gonna speak about item number three regarding the Luzerne County Fair. In full disclosure, the pews did have something with Ms. McDermott when they did the real estate committee, if I remember back a while back. There was a huge amount of property given out. There was no outcry then, no outcry at all. Gave out big parcels of land that were in the repository. No outcry. Now, all of a sudden, we're talking about people that are on the take and all this other stuff because somebody lost an election. I get it. Losing elections aren't pleasant, I've lost a couple myself, but let's not stop the process because we lost an election. Luzerne County Fair does great things for the county. Mr. Fitzgerald had a ten out there at the Luzerne County Fair. I doubt very much he looked at a financial statement for the Luzerne County Fair Corporation to see if they have the money or not. To make this assertion that they have the money is a broad statement. If you could look at their financial statement and see they do have the money, that might be an accurate statement. I don't know if they do or they don't, but I do know that that fair benefits the county in general. We have a Luzerne County Fair there that people go to every single year, and it does benefit the county. And whether Mr. Pew is connected to anybody on his council or gives money, that's not even the issue. The issue here is, do we wanna fund the fair to make it worthwhile for this county or not? And I think it's a worthwhile expenditure, especially when we're giving money out to nonprofits all over the counties. These people actually pay taxes to the county, so I don't see why we would not be forthcoming in giving some help to somebody who lost a lot of property, had a lot of damage under no fault of their own, when it was a huge natural disaster, for lack of a better term. That place got devastated with that rain, and I think they do need the help for that. So I strongly encourage Council to vote in favor of giving them. It's interest money, anyway. It's not coming out of ARPA money either way. So we can help people that need help in this county. That's what we're about, that's what we're supposed to be about. And whether it be the Luzerne County Fair or anybody else, if they come here and they need help, we did the same for the Wyoming, the place up there, Wyoming or Exeter. So let's just keep that in mind. We're here to help people.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Mr. Pew?
Thank you. Alan Pew from Dallas Township. I came to talk about the fair, but let me address Mr. Fitzgerald, who was on the radio numerous times during the campaign with McDermott, so they've teamed up. The gentleman had threatened to sue the fair when he didn't think he was gonna get his spot because he wanted to be there so bad, but now it's not important because I personally took the call. The person who they had to call the police on because the person felt threatened when he showed up and made a report. The person who's the volunteer that rents the space, that said, "I can't believe how the person talked to him," didn't even want him there, but we let him there because we're open to everybody, to the fair board members that are here, and the loose statements, but what else do we expect? Because some of us are here to grandstand and plead for oneself, right? That's what we're here for. I'm here because I volunteer for the community and have done it for 45 years of this year. The fair gets a lot of money from the pews and from a lot of these other folks. This is our junior fair board member. These, or a lot of them are also 4-H. These are from the clubs that have volunteered for years. The fair is 62 years old this year. So don't be fooled by politics as usual. Heck, Mr. Fitzgerald just called one of my employees not long ago and said, "Brenda Pew needs to get with me. She could be there, she could make this." I didn't wanna make it about this, but this is obvious, it's so obvious, and I'm really sure that the people here could see reality. If you can't stand the little heat, then maybe politics isn't for you. Perhaps it's not. I'm okay with it. Reckless statements, that's something we'll deal with personally. It's okay. You know, when you do things, you make waves. When you do nothing but for yourself, what do you accomplish? Think about that. So we're here on behalf of the fair to say, gentlemen, I don't think it's a real miracle that you know we suffered a major disaster. You could see our 990. If you wanna look at some color for past, I suggest there's some other people in this room you could look up pretty simply, too. But really, the fair is here, and we appreciate you considering us for the funding. You've seen many of the things you funded under your ARPA funds, many. A lot of people question them, you made your best decisions, and we hope you consider ours worthwhile on behalf of the future people that are gonna be here that wanna see how this works. I expect everyone of you to vote how you feel, okay? But by the same token, think of what this is made for. What was this ARPA funds doing, and does this fit that bill? There's always important things. We think this is important, that's why they volunteered for years. We give back to the communities and donate to many volunteer organizations, come out, spend their time there. No one's paid at the fair except the security company that does parking. Obviously, we have the professional people that park and provide security. Other than that, it's donations to clubs that come out. You go to bigger fairs, they are paid positions. Ours are not, we're all volunteer. Most of us, it costs us to be there, whether it's paying for fair food during the week or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pew. Anybody else in the audience for public comment? No? Anybody on the Zoom?
John, I just wanted to let you know I'm here. Joanna, I'm on the phone number-
Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, hearing no other public comment, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the June 25, 2024 voting session?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, okay, one abstention. All right. Minutes are approved. Number one, motion to adopt the resolution ratifying the original agreement and authorizing the county manager to execute a revised agreement with Axon Enterprises, Inc. for tasers and related supplies and warranties for use at the Luzerne County Correctional Facility.
So moved.
On the question?
Is there a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, there's a second by Ms. McDermott. Go ahead, Ms. Stevenson.
So considering Mr. Griffith's comment just now, instead of using general funds and using commissary funds, is that something that we can do? Is that a possibility? And what are those current numbers if we have them?
I'm not sure. I'll have Jim Wilbur come to the podium, but those funds that the controller is speaking about, and I agree with him, we need to use those funds. There are specific reasons why we can use those funds. I don't believe that the tasers fall under that umbrella.
No, I do not. So to that question, first of all, it is general funds, you're correct, but it's budgeted general funds in our safety supply item line, as I explained last week. That's something that was already in there. It's just not denoted as tasers, per se. It's under safety supplies, the same line we buy our ammunition for, so that our correctional officers can qualify with their weapons. So again, the inmate welfare fund is there, and there are some ideas and plans to utilize that to benefit the inmates. I believe that there are more crystal clear, definitive projects that we have that we need to look at that wouldn't bring any question. This one might bring some question at some point because the idea, according to Title 37, is that that fund, yes, it has to be audited. However, it doesn't really tell us exactly how you should spend it, but it does tell us it needs to benefit the inmates.
So there might be a very big leap that the tasers directly benefit the inmates.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
So we're saying, Mr. Crocamo, so it's not the most optimal way to spend those funds because we might not be spending them correctly?
Correctly.
That's what I'm, if I'm interpreting that correctly.
Yes, and we have, we've been looking in to use those funds with the controller's help and input, to use those funds. We can use those funds directly to benefit the inmates. It'll be clear, and it will actually reduce a lot of our general fund monies. This is not that clear. I would have to, and the Office of Law may have to do some legal tap dancing to make it cover.
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
And I know that it's tough for the general public to understand sometimes that government, there are specific funds that are earmarked for certain projects, and some you just can't tap, and it's not like it's a big pot of money. I know this is very, very difficult because before I was involved in government, I thought, oh, well, you just, you know, get the money from whatever source. However, that being said, I'm looking at the agenda today, not only this, because Mr. Griffith brought up a very intelligent point, and also with item number three, with the county fair ask, and also for the original number seven opioid settlement. I think the big thing I would really like to see is, I just wanna make sure we are using general funds with the utmost discretion, that we can minimize any need for a tax increase down the road. And we've talked about this before, Manager Crocamo, and I think my colleagues are very much on the same page. I'm asking all our department heads and our division heads as well, let's make sure we scrape the bottom of the barrel when we're really looking at how we're gonna pay for these items, because, you know, government's expensive, and we just wanna make sure that by, when we show up in October, that we can make those easier, those decisions a lot more easy if we have the funds, you know, allocated the most optimal way. I know I'm probably being a little verbose there, but if we can challenge you, too, Manager, just how can we can make sure we spend these funds correctly? And with the county fair, it's not, we're not talking about that just now, but that's my big question. What do we have, what do we have at our disposal? I know it's gonna be a little later tonight, Mr. Chairman, but just to prepare, I'm gonna ask more questions like that.
Sure.
All right.
They're very welcome. Those questions are welcome. I wanna be clear, absolutely clear, to this council, the people here in this room, and the people on Zoom, and the people who may be reading about this meeting in the newspapers. Since May of 2023, I have been clear with my department and division heads that we are going to do everything in our power not to increase taxes. And we do that by making our government more efficient and using monies wisely. And we are doing that. We do that on, every single day, when an issue comes up about where we can use money most effectively. And I pride myself on that, and I take great, even greater pride in my department and division heads because they're on the bus and they are with me on this journey. There are things, though, that we have to address, serious challenges that we have to address, serious challenges that I wasn't a part of, and a lot of council members currently on council weren't a part of. We have to fix those challenges. We have to redo a lot of projects because they weren't done correctly. And we have to focus on what's important for the county. And that's what we're doing, and I am confident. I know that there are people on this council who are with me, and I appreciate that. But we are. We're looking at our funds, and we're looking at our funds, how we use them the best way we can, and we're looking at more funds.
And just to add a little bit to that, one of the ways that we've really been able to facilitate all of this is by working really well with the administration. When council and the administration work together to try to get answers in like a non-combative and positive way, it really helps. It really makes things better. So I've been very proud to be part of this council and the previous council where we have actually done that, and that makes a huge difference.
No, hats off to you, Mr. Chairman, too, because I've seen a tangible difference between both your leadership and management. So I really appreciate you and all the other staff members as well.
Thank you.
And I wanna jump in there just to add to that a little bit, and I want the public to know, I'm here about two and a half years, and there's some new council members here for six months, seven months, and I could tell you on a daily basis, not every single one of us on a daily basis, but during the week, I call and I email Manager Crocamo, and my question always is, "How are we gonna pay for this? Is there any other way we could pay for this? Is there any way we could, you know, fund this program going forward without raising taxes?" And I know my colleagues around the table make the same calls to her and ask her the same questions, and it's always at the forefront of our mind as council because our number one priority here on council really is to watch the purse strings of the county and abide by the charter and not raise taxes if at all possible. Now, I can tell you, last year was miraculous. I know Manager Crocamo instructed her entire staff, division heads, department heads, "When you give me the budget to present to council, this is last fall." She said, "I want you to present a budget to me." She said it to every one of them, a lot of them are sitting here. "I want you to give me a budget that has zero increase." And guess what? They did. And that was at a time when this country and this state had pretty high inflation. You go around, look at all the counties of Pennsylvania, rarely will you find one that had a 0% tax increase, but we did right here, and I credit Manager Crocamo for that, and I just want everybody in the room to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on number one? Go ahead, Mr. Lescavage.
So I also would like to add to this. I could tell you personally, from the time we have Ms. Crocamo as our county manager, there's not one single time that I've reached out by either text or phone call, and most times, answer's my call, or I get a polite text, "Can't talk right now, but I'll get back to you in 10 minutes," but not once do I ever recall where that dialogue never went both ways. And I'm very appreciative of that because I know I get busy in my job, it's not always hard to get back to people, but I greatly appreciate the effort that she puts forward. I'm behind her 1,000%.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. Roll call?
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Willovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number two, motion to adopt the resolution approving a painting of the Macon aqua Shikshini Bridge in honor of Edward Steber.
So moved.
Second.
Who was the first on?
I was.
Okay, all right. Ms. Stevenson, and who was the second?
Mr. Willovich.
Mr. Willovich, got it. Okay. First and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Smith?
Uh, yes, sorry.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Willovich?
I'm hoping we have more projects like this? Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number three, motion to adopt the resolution allocating American Rescue Plan Act interest funds to the Dallas Area Fall Fair Incorporated trading as Luzerne County Fair.
Second.
Motion in the second.
On the question?
Okay. I'm gonna, can I have, can I have a, all right, Ms. Smith, you can go first.
Thank you. I'd actually make a motion to table this. I would submit that we still don't have enough information. Right now, under the last email that I received, and I know I've been on vacation for a couple of days, so I might be a couple of days behind, but in the last information I have, we have $922,000, $673.70 left in our ARPA principal, and that's what we call the ARPA funding, as Ramilda has called it, that has all the strings attached to it. In our ARPA interest that we can use on anything, we have $4.2 million, specifically $4,242,795. For internal projects, we have $10.9 million in internal projects, and that does not include our EMA and our 911. We are way short for our internal projects, and even if you include our interest, in six months, we'll have $1.8 million of interest, and in a year, we'll have $3 million of interest. I love Luzerne County Fair. My father has a booth there every year with the Historical Society. He's there with Lions Club every year. I have many fond memories of the fair. I know it does a great, great amount of good. However, I don't think we still have enough information to answer this question yet. The ARPA funds, and to speak to the people who spoke before and who talked about the ARPA money going to other projects in the beginning, we are now in a place where ARPA, and Chairman Lombardo, you know this, you were at the ARPA information session with me, ARPA has changed its categories so many times that projects that we may not have considered in the beginning, we'd be able to consider now. So that's just a fact of life. It's changed. The problem is that we do not have the information that we need. We don't have all of the information on our own individual projects that we as a county want to get through because Booth has not given us that information. So we don't know how much money we would like to spend on our internal projects versus external projects. If anyone knows me, they know I'm a person who wants to spend money on what's good in society. They know I have a huge public interest background, and that's where I am. But if the question is, we get to do these projects and not raise taxes, I don't wanna raise taxes. If I can't give a break to the people sitting in that audience, I don't know if I can give a break to anybody else. The problem is, we don't have all of the information still, and that's not our fault. We're still waiting on it. So I'm asking that we please make a motion to table this because of those numbers and because of the lack of information that we have, not because the fair is not great for Luzerne County.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there a second for the motion to table?
Instead of table, can we really discuss this thing? This is the right forum to discuss this.
Well, there's a motion to table. Is there a second? All right, motion to table fails for a lack of second. There's a first and a second on the original motion. Ms. McDermott, I'll have you next, since you have some, you said you have questions.
Yes. So exactly what Joanna just said. The amount left of the principal American Rescue Plan money is $922,673. That means that's for eligible categories, internal or external projects. Now, the interest money we can use on anything, right now, we have $4.2 million. And again, it's accumulating every month approximately $300,000. But the internal projects that were submitted to Booth last month, to see if they're eligible, we haven't gotten an answer on. However, it doesn't matter because we only have $922,000. So if they even are eligible, we still only have $922,000. With the interest, hopefully we could build some more over the next six months, year. If that's the case, we may get $1.8 million, $3 million over a year. We still would only be at seven, a little over $7,000. Again, our internal projects are $10.9 million. If, and Mr., you know, Mr. Thornton, Mr. Lescavage, you said, and I agree with you, we all wanna work our best to not increase anyone's taxes in Luzerne County. If we have to do these internal projects and put them in the budget, that could very possibly raise our taxes. So if we wanna be prudent, we wanna work through everything, I don't wanna put it off until the budget to do these internal projects. The bottom line is, so everybody understands, we have $922,000 left in the American Rescue Plan principal amount that can be used on anything, eligible, eligible category, internal or external, so that's only $922,000. If we give away $500,000, where are we left with not much? We still only have $4 million interest. Again, that doesn't cover the $10.9 million. I think it's basic math. You could call it an axe to grind, you could call it whatever you want, favoritism. I don't care. I'm working with numbers. I was elected to be fiscally conservative, that's what I am. I work on the budget. I have produced amendments that help to keep the budget down. Other people have not produced amendments, and they vote no on the budget. So as long as you work on the budget and try to get amendments to keep it down, then you could at least say that you're trying hard to not increase people's taxes. It's basic math. Keep the taxes down, put the money to internal projects. Thank you.
Mr. Haas, did you have some questions?
Yeah, I just think tonight's decision really hinges on exactly what Mr. McDermott was just talking about. What do we really have at our disposal? What options are out there? How can we use the ARPA funds-
How can we use the ARPA funds or the principal, the interest, whatever, to offset our bottom line here internally? So, um, that's what I'd like to have a discussion with management. Maybe Ms. Sparich can come forward, or Ms. Crockman can talk just a little more about this. I'm sure other colleagues feel the same way.
Ms. Sparich, if you want to come up, if you just want to, you know, I, I guess the overarching question is just, all right, what, what do we have left in our principal? And this, this is something that has been, just for, for the public's knowledge, this is something that has been kind of going back and forth through emails with council all throughout the day. And we do have all these final numbers, but we just want to make sure it's out in the public so that you're all aware of, of exactly what we're talking about here. So if you could just, the, the, what's left in the principal, what we have in the interest, and then, um, you know, you could speak, you could speak to the lost revenue as well. Um, and, yeah, I, I, but I'm just saying, it's just, you know, so go ahead. Yeah.
And it, and the reason why we ask that booth review is that if the money is used for an internal project, that money, we have to be consistent. Because let's assume, for the sake of argument, that we're going to get audited by the U.S. Treasury, we have created a system that everybody is treated the same way. So if we're using that ARPA principal money, Booth has to review the project and make sure that it fits into a category. I can tell you that there were asks by the departments that will not fit in that category. So just so everybody understands, that's why we asked Booth to review all the projects, the internal projects.
And as we go to Ms. Crockman, Mr. Count, Mr. Chair? So there is a deadline to expend these funds of December 31st of this year, right, Ms. Sparich?
No, no, that's the deadline to obligate the funds.
Correct. You're right. I meant obligate, right? To obligate them by the end of this calendar year.
Not the interest money.
No.
Not the interest money.
Just the principal.
And the principal, does the, the ask from the Luzerne County Fair Board, does that meet, does that have an eligible category for these funds?
It was under natural disaster.
A natural, of which it is. Okay.
And just by way of history, just by, by way of history, the original ask was from FEMA because of the devastation of that flood. And I went with our EMA, FEMA representatives and FEMA representatives to the fairground because they were doing a review. And it was, it was pretty devastating. And I do want to say this, that but for the immediate response of the people who were at the fair and the emergency personnel, it would have been much worse. So FEMA rejects our application. And we partnered with the city of Scranton, who had more devastation than we did, Lackawanna County and Wyoming County. As a group, we appealed FEMA's decision. FEMA denied that appeal. One of the reasons why FEMA denied the appeal was because the, it fell on, we could get other federal money and they used ARPA money as an example. That's part of the back history of this, of this particular project. And that's why they, they filled out the application was because of that. They, they came to us. We didn't recruit them. It's not our job to go out and say to people, you were a victim of a natural disaster, you might be able to apply for ARPA money. They reached out to us. We told them, like, we wouldn't, we had to, we needed to treat them the same way, fill out the application. So that's the history. The history is really that FEMA dropped the ball. And if I could change anything, we want to send messages to Harrisburg, I'll send a message to Washington.
FEMA.
Well, I remember Ms. Crocamo too.
Hold on, Ms. McDermott. Mr. Haas is still making.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Uh, I know, I think, I think Dave Pedger was still the manager, but we had a giant blizzard event here in the county. Do you, some of you remember that? Um, I don't know if anybody was on the board when, when we had that. And we asked FEMA and FEMA if we could have some relief, and none was granted, even though the government, the governor at the time went to bat for us. So there's just, there's just a lot of factors at play.
Right.
With these kind of situations. But this is exactly what I was talking about earlier, you know, and I appreciate that because if you don't ask, you don't get.
Right. And the governor did back us.
Manager did the right thing.
The governor did back, did back us.
Yes. I do remember that.
Even with our ask and our appeal. But that's what, and it was months, you know, it didn't, it didn't happen overnight. But I can tell you, uh, and I'll, I don't want to speak for my colleagues in the other counties, but they were, they were zealous of wanting to get the monies for the damages. They lost lives. People in Scranton died.
Absolutely. But that, and that's what I was telling before about trying to look under every pillow, look under a cushion to find what other matching funds we have for these projects. And, you know, we've been, we did in that situation, it didn't yield anything, but, um, again, it might add some clarity to what we're talking about tonight. Thank you.
Um, Ms. Sparich, did you, did you have anything further? Do you want to add on?
Just if there were any other questions. I believe I sent the interest amount that's available. That was as of May 31st because we don't have all the June bank statements.
And with that interest, we currently, because of the fact that there is still about, what, $65 million left in our original ARPA account, something?
Yeah, roughly.
Yeah, roughly. I'm just using rough numbers here, that we're earning over $300,000 every month of interest because many projects, both external and internal, have not yet drawn down any funds.
Correct.
So that's why we still have roughly half of that money left in our, in our, in our ARPA account. Um, Ms., let, uh, Mr. Thornton, do you have something to say first?
Just a quick statement.
$65 million, they can draw down that money in 2025 and in 2026. That's, there's no, there's not a time period.
Right. The funds have to be expended by 12/31 of '26, but they have to be obligated by the end of this, this calendar year.
But I think we're confusing people by putting that number in there. That money pretty much is allocated. Again, the balance of the principal is.
Right. The 65 million is allocated.
Okay. It's true, but if, uh, we had a, a training session, uh, by Booth and, uh, Councilwoman Smith and, uh, Councilman Sabatino and Councilman Stevenson and Councilman Lombardo attended. We had it last Friday. We had it by Zoom as well. They were the four council members who attended. We re, we are reviewing those projects. So, uh, Booth is going to come in. They came in to do a site visit last week. They will come back and they will, they will reach out to the projects and they have them categorized as high risk, medium risk, low risk. And those that have high risk, that they are not going to be able to use their funds by 2026, we are then going to reach out to them and say, you have to, we're going to claw back the money. That's the term that is used. We're going to get that money back. So there's also projects that took a one-time advance, didn't spend any money, and are making interest on that money. So Booth sent out a letter to all subrecipients, all the groups that did, all the groups that received money, and we told them, you're giving that interest back to us. So we, we don't have the exact number. We really don't. There, but there are numbers out there that are, the monies that are going to come back to the county. And I want everybody in this room to know that between Michelle and Mark Majikis and the Office of Budget and Finance and Booth, Michelle's on the phone with Booth every single day. We are monitoring this because giving out the money to 145, 146 projects, it took from September of 2022 to March of 2023. We are going to be working on overseeing how that money was used until probably 2027 because it's very intricate and it's very detailed. But I want to assure everybody in this room, we are on top of it. We are looking at every single penny that has gone out.
And all of the quarter, all of the subrecipients have to file a quarterly report by July 10th. So that will cover the period from April 1st to June 30th. So we don't know what they've spent in that time period until the reports are received.
And then we have to do our yearly report.
Correct. There's a report that has to go to the U.S. Treasury by the end of July.
Okay. Ms. McDermott, if you want to just finish up, and then Mr. Thornton.
So, again, there's, there's a lot of answers that we still need with numbers. Numbers, hard numbers are, are what, you know, you can make sense of everything with. Again, just getting back to, because the 65 million that's in there, again, is allocated, but it comes down to pretty much right now, the principal amount that we have that we know of is 922,000. That's the principal amount. And just to go back really quick to the FEMA, there were nine municipalities, 17 businesses and 63 residents that were on that letter as well, that was on the letter to President Biden. But we only had one application, and we closed our application period. Council devoted on that. When we, when we closed that application period, we accepted an application after that application period. That's fine. But we didn't offer or.
No, we didn't. We didn't because I, I said that. It was not in our, we do not have to go out and say, okay, municipalities, apply for the ARPA grant.
I wonder how these municipalities and businesses feel right now.
Ms. McDermott, please.
Without getting them.
All right. Let her finish her statement.
She interrupted him ahead.
Okay. All right.
I just wanted to say, I don't know how these municipalities and businesses and residents feel now that they didn't have a chance to put in an application. We didn't offer that out there. It, it did come in the application, all fine and good, but these other entities were not offered that same thing. We didn't open up the application process. Here we are. I think, again, my biggest thing is coming down to only having $922,000 left for category, eligible category. The interest can be used on anything, which I'm hoping we will use on internal projects. Again, why wouldn't we? Why do we want to raise taxes? Let's use it on internal projects. But the biggest thing is that $922,000. If we get 500,000 of it away, that's all that we have left.
I just want to, a, a clear missed statement. There was no offer. We did not go out to the Luzerne County Fair and offer them to, to file an application. They came to us. If a municipality came to us or any kind of nonprofit came to us, we would have answered the same exact way. And the reason why we have them fill out, out an application, number one, FEMA said there were ARPA eligible, uh, monies, and we wanted to be consistent because when the U.S. Treasury comes in to audit Luzerne County, you know who's going to be sitting at that table? The county manager, Michelle, Mark Majikis, Mary Roselle, and Budget and Finance, probably someone from the Office of Law. We are going to be sitting at that table. So I want every T crossed and every I dotted. And that's why when they came to us, when the fair came to us, we said, you need to fill out an application. We didn't offer, we didn't pick up the phone and say, fill out an application. I want everybody clear to understand that.
All right. Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I just want to state real quickly, very important, some projects will never be completed, and we will get back monies for the county to use. We won't know what they are, maybe not even 2025, it might be 2026. But there will be money coming back. The suggestion that all 146 projects are going to go forward 100%, I could tell you right now, I know of some that won't be completed, in my opinion. Not going to state names out loud. I don't want to embarrass anything, anybody. But, uh, monies will be coming back to the county. Absolutely. Secondly, uh, I just want to remind everybody about a month ago, there was another major storm that went through that fair and did more damage. Because I don't know if you people, most people know, when there's a serious down deluge of rain, it forms its own creeks and streams where no stream was ever before. It just ruts out and it goes, nature takes its course and it goes wherever it wants. And when another storm comes, it gets larger. The next storm, larger. So as we sit and banter this around, and in my opinion, beat a dead horse by this time, more and more damage is always being done as we sit on this, these funds. Lastly, I just want to tell everybody here that the notion that we shouldn't vote on these things because we don't have hard numbers yet is a crazy, unreasonable suggestion to not vote. Because we'll, we won't have hard numbers for a year or two on all of these projects. And if we held that kind of logic. Excuse me.
Ms. Smith, Ms. Smith, please. All right. Let Mr. Thornton finish his statement.
If we're going to use that logic that we shouldn't award the money until we had hard numbers, we wouldn't have awarded any of this money a year and a half, two years ago. So I don't think that's a reasonable suggestion that we can't vote on something because we don't have all the hard numbers or figures, which aren't, can't possibly come to us for another year or two. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Smith? Oh, she just disappeared.
If I could, oh, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Lescavage, you want to go first then, Mr. Haas?
Yes. Could we please take this to a vote?
All right. Do you have, you have something you'd like to, okay. All right. Uh, Mr. Wilovich then.
Okay. So to be clear, there is $922,673 in ARPA principal that is not allocated to any other projects.
Correct.
Okay. The fair project put in an application and it is eligible.
Correct.
Okay. So they followed all the procedures that everybody else that put in applications did. Everything is done to the T, eyes are dotted, Ts are crossed. So if that is eligible, I believe we should be using eligible funds instead of using the interest, and then we can use the interest for whatever projects we need to. Instead of tying up interest money, I think we should be using it as an eligible project because there is a possibility we'll be getting more money back on top of the 922,000. But I don't want to be tying up interest money that could be used for another road project or something else that the county needs that would not be eligible. So I would like to make a motion to change it from the interest to the actual principal.
Is it?
Isn't that the original ask? Isn't it from, it's from the 922, correct?
There's a different one that I put in the packet, the original one that doesn't have the interest.
Okay. Because in, in the agenda, it says interest.
You want it to be appropriate?
No, there's another one behind it, a page or two behind it.
Well, I was just saying, because the actual motion as presented in the agenda, it says interest.
Yes, yes, yes.
I'll second Mr. Wilovich's, just, just to make it appropriate, if we can talk about it, and, and is that clear?
Yeah.
Can you speak on it, Mr. Chair? Could you do that?
This is going to be a motion to change, the, the original motion says Plan Act Interest Funds. So this will be for, correct?
Or you can withdraw your motions if they're on the other one.
No, that's not, that's not, that's not correct. That's not correct. That must be, yeah, I'm not sure what, that's not correct. Okay. So it'll be, it'll be to the.
To amend.
To amend it to say the.
American Rescue Plan.
Yeah.
It's just American Rescue Plan.
Act funds.
Yeah.
Not interest. Okay, there's a motion and a second on that.
Question?
Go ahead.
I, just to clarify, and I think that's a great suggestion, maybe we should ask the opinion of Ms. Sparage and maybe Ms. Crocamo of why that would be a good idea and maybe why it would not be a good idea.
I mean, ultimately, it's council's decision. It is an eligible category, so it would be eligible for the regular principal or the ARPA funds. But as Ramilda had stated, the interest funds can be used on anything. So that, that's your decision. I, I don't know, I'm not a finance person, so I don't know that I can give you any more pros and cons.
Ms. Crocamo, there's, there's no downside to that?
No, I mean, either, either source of the funding.
But my, my.
But it qualifies for one of the categories under the ARPA principle.
My thought is I don't want to tie up the 500,000 on something that could be used for something else when it's an eligible project.
Yeah, there's a logic to keeping the interest money available for projects that wouldn't, for anything that wouldn't qualify under, under ARPA.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Money's a little bit better off not using the interest.
Well, we're accruing interest and, on Caitlin, are you, we're accruing interest on the 65 million dollars.
Any cash that we currently have in the account.
Yeah, so it's a 65 million plus whatever interest we have, we're accruing interest.
And don't forget, any of the sub recipients who earned interest will be returning that this month as well. So that will go back into that, into our interest pot.
Caitlin, maybe you can, she's the deputy director of Budget and Finance. Patty, Patty, your question was?
Well, I don't know if it's a question as much as it's a comment, that it would be better serving to take it out than 900,000 than it would be the, the interest because we're constantly earning money on the interest. It would be more beneficial to, to take it out that way than that. Is that not correct? I guess that's my point, that we'd be making more interest.
I think, I, just to clarify, I think that, that the, the question is that it's better to take it out of the, the reason Mr. Vlilovich made the motion is to take it out of the principal rather than the interest is because it's eligible under principal. The interest has, has no restrictions.
But we're still making money on the interest and, and if we dip into, we've been making less money, I guess that's my point.
Well, we'd be making, we're, we're making money on, on the 65 million dollars, not, not just the, the 4 million dollar, whatever it is of interest that we have left. I mean, we're making money with the, with that 900,000 too. So yeah, we are going to be making less money. But currently, what's our interest every month is about 300,000 dollars?
I want to say it was 300 to 350.
Three, somewhere between three and 350. So that's, you know, what we'll be spending potentially in this would be about a month and a half, two months of interest. So that's, is there, is there, do you have any other questions? Ms. Krishnowski?
So point of order on that, is that correct then? So Greg, just to clarify, because you made, you made the motion to, basically the resolved clause on page 27, council members. Greg is, is saying, switch out interest for principal. So it should now read, now therefore be resolved Luzern County approves the allocation up to 500,000 American Rescue Plan Act Principal Funds. That's your, that's what you wanted, correct?
Want to use.
Mr. Vlilovich?
Yes.
And I second that.
Okay.
Just, and I, and I, I second that because, you know, I'm not looking just to game the system, just to, to get more interest, although it's really nice, but the principal, the interest funds are unencumbered. So that gives management and, and us by proxy and all the taxpayers better leeway to spend. This way, it's an eligible use. We're not going to be calling the carpet. It's very safe and time is of the essence. When we, I don't want to sit here on January 1st of next year with another 922,000 saying, oh, I guess we should have spent that. And again, I'm not being flip, I'm not saying, let's just get out this, get this out the door, but this seems a very legitimate use to me. It's the Luzern County Fair. This is going to benefit Luzern County and I like these kinds of projects that benefit everybody. And I remember as a kid going to the fair. I was there in 48 this year, I can't believe it, but I remember back as a little boy. The grounds have gotten a lot better. It has been, it's really, it's a wonderful place. If you haven't been, I'd encourage everybody to take a look this early September when they hold it. But again, my, my point is to second what Greg said.
Okay.
It's just a wiser use.
There's a motion and a second. Ms. Smith, are you back on? Can you hear?
Oh, she's just going off again. And if I can add that, that the fair has.
Hold on, hold on one second. IT, I, I think she's trying to reconnect. She was on and then she got knocked off again. She's saying it's not a good.
She's trying to stop the phone, but she, she just.
Okay, I'm just, I just want it to be on the record that she is trying to reconnect as things go on, and I'm trying to keep an eye on this. Go ahead.
Just so council knows, we had both. So council knows, we had both resolutions in the packet. So the one that's on page 32 is for the regular ARPA funds.
I just want to make that clear. It's in here, it's written as.
Right. So, so we'll be using the resolution that's on page 22? 32. But we're, we're making an amendment to the motion because the motion was stated as with interest funds, because both of those are in there.
Yes.
So that's, that's what, sorry, that was where maybe the confusion came in. Okay, for the, this is for the amendment. All right. Roll call.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott? Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Vlilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Ten.
Okay. Motion for the amendment passes. We're back to a motion and a second. Does anybody have any other questions?
Call the question.
I have a, okay, all right, you called the question? All right, that's fine. Okay, motion and a second, roll call.
Ms. McDermott? I'm going to go back to my same reasons that I said before. Right now, we're at 10.9 million extra internal projects, plus we didn't include EMA and 911. So we're well over 10.9 million that we need. No matter how much interest we accrue and the principal amount, it's still not going to meet that. To me, the internal projects are more important, so I vote no.
But can we continue discussion, Mr. Chair? I'm sorry.
There's already been a call.
The question's been called, I know, but.
I apologize.
This is so, this is so important, but I understand.
I agree with you. If you'd like to, if you'd like to wait till maybe the end, we can, before public comment, we'll have a couple.
Thank you, sir.
Because I would like to make a statement as well.
Absolutely.
So anyway, let's continue the vote. I apologize.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Stevenson?
I'm happy to go forward and support the Luzern County Fair. I will say that I have not been there yet and I hope that moving forward that this is successful and hopefully it is a quality inclusive environment that I would not mind attending. I vote yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Vlilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Nine yes, one no.
Okay. Number four, motion to adopt a resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act ones, uh, funds awarded project for Luzern County building and grounds, number two.
Some moved. Second.
Uh, motion and a second. Roll call. Are there any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Vlilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Just letting her know. Number five, motion to adopt a resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act Funds Awarded Project for Cunningham Borough.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Vlilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Ms. Smith? Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, number six, introduction of ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzern County for the DA grant, Manager Crocamo?
For the introduction of the ordinance. Use the, uh, the budget amendments for an ordinance amending the budget. The district attorney received a grant. It wasn't noted in the budget and we need to do that.
Okay, are there any questions on that? Okay. Before we move into public comment or as we move into public comment, I know a couple of council members might have a little bit more they'd like to say on the fair and I am certainly one of them. But more broadly, what I'd like to speak on is the work that we've done on the American Rescue Plan. I am so proud of Luzern County for the work that we've done, so proud of this council and so proud of the administration because it hasn't been easy and our work has transcended four different managers. And it certainly has transcended most of the people on this council. And we knew it was going to be messy. We knew that from the beginning, but you know what? I said, let's embrace the mess. Let's do it. We just last week had a meeting, uh, not a meeting, we had a training session with Booth that I really didn't think that I needed to go to because I said, oh, I know, you know, quite a bit about this. I really immersed myself in the American Rescue Plan language. And when we were there, Gladys Vasquez said something to us that really stuck with me. She said, you guys did such a great job for your community. You really touched everybody in Luzern County. You made a difference in a lot of people's lives. You really did. And, uh, you know, we have done so much both for the internal projects in Luzern County and external. Internal, not just this 10 million dollars or 17 million dollars, these conversations that we have here at the council meetings. You know, we've also done elevator projects, we've done building renovations. We did give funding to 911 for an advanced system for the radios so that we can include GPS tracking for all of our first responders to make them a little bit safer. And I personally am very thankful for that. We also gave money for vehicles for road and bridge. And all of this stuff would have come out of taxpayer funded dollars and we would have had to figure that out at budget time. But now we don't have to do that. Now they don't have to come to us at budget time to figure that out. We also gave that 55 million dollars away for public projects like fire trucks, sewer lines, food banks, ambulance services, police equipment. We gave away a small business grant that the chambers of commerce actually had to go out and seek applicants because there weren't enough applicants because we gave so much money. We gave a utility assistance program that we actually had to change the, the system for because there weren't enough people applying because we gave so much money. And we're still looking to do more with this, with this money. And I think we should all be proud of that. And when this, this thing came up with the fair, we had a lot of great suggestions. Councilman Sabatino came up with an idea and said, hey, how can Luzern County be included in the fair? How can we actually become a partner with the fair? Let's use this as like a springboard to actually make the Luzern County Fair a county sponsored event, a county fair. I think that's an amazing idea. And even to Councilwoman McDermott's credit, I know that some of us on here disagreed with her, but we did finally get these answers that we were looking for about what the differences of what money we had, whether it's the principal, whether it's the interest, you know, revenue loss. And, and even up to today, we were finding out more answers. So I, you know, I do give you credit for, for giving us, for, for, for being so, you know, forthcoming with trying to get those answers. But I think that one of the things that are really important, and this is again, not, doesn't really just have anything to do with, with ARPA, but we need to be a little bit more deliberate about the words that we say out here in the public, council members need to. When we were having this discussion initially, there were some council members that had concerns that myself and Manager Crocamo were, were not forwarding ARPA applications for some type of deliberate purpose. And, I mean, that really wasn't true. But members of the public actually heard that and they took it and ran with it and they thought it was gospel, when in fact, it really just wasn't true. And, and when other council members were questioning the numbers and saying, hey, I don't really like the way that this is turning out, I don't like your numbers. You know, the, the problem is, one of the issues that we have with home rule is there's some communication issues between council and between the administration. So there, we're looking at things from maybe a different system than we were, but we were able to reconcile it. And I was, I was very happy that we were able to do so, even though it's here in the 11th hour, which is how it always happens for us. But hey, it happened and now we have the answers. But we're here doing these things for the people. And I love every day that I'm out and I'm talking to people and I have a business owner come up to me and say, hey, because of what you did with ARPA, I was able to do something that I couldn't do because of COVID. Or, um, you know, just a resident say, hey, you, you, my road got paved because of what you guys did with ARPA funds. I think that's great. And I was just so proud, not only to be able to support this project, to be able to support all the projects that we did with ARPA, but I, I'm just grateful to have, to have had that opportunity. So thank you. I just, I just wanted to make sure that I, I said that. Go ahead, Ms. Stevenson?
Um, I would like to give a special shout out to myself, Sparage. This past two weeks has been very intense. And when I tell you, Michelle has delivered every, every step of the way. The document you set out that broke down all of the payments, you addressed every question that we had asked in the past two weeks and it was phenomenal. I appreciate that so much. And Ramilda, thank you very much, County Manager Crocamo. I respect you, I appreciate you. I appreciate the conversations that we were able to have, whether I'm challenging you or not, because I know I'm coming from a very different perspective than a lot of the other council members here. The last two weeks have been intense and you two have done a really great job. And Leanne, thank you very much for your last four weeks. Your questions were meaningful. They allowed us to question and challenge the things that we are considering in this space and that is important. Not everything comes with a quick answer. Sometimes it takes two weeks, sometimes it takes six months. Respect that. Because if Leanne didn't speak up, we wouldn't have got some of the answers we needed to make the decisions we made today, whether you liked it or not. So thank you, everyone who contributed to this particular conversation on the fair and navigating this with empathy and compassion. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? Mr. Haas, do you have anything to say?
Well, I just want to sing a song again. You know, it's one of those moments.
Don't threaten me with a good time.
I don't want to track from what you both said, that was very nice. I, I just had some, I, I thought this was really meaningful and I do appreciate you, Leanne, what you brought up because I had some very similar questions. And this is what I was hoping for, Mr. Chair. So thank you, everybody involved, what Ms. Stevenson just said. I just have a couple more questions. I hope we could just get this out so we don't have to come back and, and do this again if I, if you can indulge me, Mr. Chair, because we've got 10.9 million dollars of internal projects earmarked. And do we have funds allocated to those 10.9s? That's, that's the wish list? Ms. Sparage, I'm sorry to call you up after the, the general meeting, but.
The memo that went out from Ramilda, those are the wish list projects. They were forwarded to Booth, but because of everything else that's going on and the big report that's due to the U.S. Treasury, they've made an initial sweep of that, but no applications have gone out for the internal projects. That's a wish list.
Yes. So obviously, we can still use the interest funds to offset those, even though it's only about half of that amount.
That would have to come before council to award to those specific projects.
Yeah, and I, I as a member, I have no problem voting on such matters. That's fine. The revenue loss, the 5.1 million dollars, can you please walk us through that one more time? The revenue loss, the $5.1 million, can you please walk us through that one more time? Forgive me, because I wasn't here when, when all this process went, but that's, that's money that we're just not going to see because of...
No, revenue loss was a category. I, I think Booth referred to it as a funding bucket, and that's how we refer to it and all the questions and responses that went out. It was a funding bucket. Because there were funds handed out, awarded, before Booth was hired, those projects were never vetted per se, to see if they fit a category. So originally, all of the money that was handed out before Booth was hired were considered revenue loss projects, because it didn't have to meet an eligible category. Once Booth came on board, they worked with some of those projects to get those projects to fit into an eligible category. So that's why the revenue loss is down to 5.1 million.
Okay.
Does that, does that answer your question?
No, absolutely, but it looks, so it looks like we're not going to get some of that back simply because it didn't meet the parameters.
Well, there's nothing to give back. We've accounted for all of the 112 million. But what was initially a revenue loss project is now in an eligible category. That's why the bucket has decreased. We still have 112 million, or 100 million, 112, but it's, it's just they're, they're reallocated to an eligible project category.
Yes.
So we have the same amount of money, it's just not in a revenue loss bucket.
Very good.
Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, absolutely. No, so there's some clarity to it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, very good. I mean, otherwise, you know, I, I ran, I didn't, I, I didn't like all the projects that the previous council suggested. I would have liked to see this going back in Homestead to the property owners, like everybody here knows, it's no secret. But nonetheless, there has been a lot of good done with this, and I think the one we just voted for is going to do a whole lot of good for the long-term future. So thanks, everybody that came out and took time tonight to support this project and Alan and the whole board. Let's sing a song.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
I just, I just want to add that the fair did reach out, and I sent an email today, that we're going to have a, a space indoors that's going to be Luzerne County. There's renovations that have to be done, but we will have a, a permanent place at the fair. And if we can get more formal participation in the fair, we can, we need to talk that through. But the fair did offer that to us, and I want to say thank you for that.
Mr. Thornton, then Mr. Lescavage, then Mr. Sabatino.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to just make a broad global statement here, and it goes like this. When I got on council two and a half years ago, I was excited. We had no idea about ARPA money coming, and I thought I knew an awful lot about this county. I know now, I really didn't know a whole lot about this county. I thought it was about a courthouse, departments, divisions, correctional, 911, airports. Since we gave this ARPA money out to all of these entities, Michelle Sparage is constantly reaching out to these entities that receive the money. And when they complete their projects, she makes arrangements for a visit by herself and she throws it out to all council members. Now, I'm fortunate, I have a lot of free time, I'm retired, so I try to attend every one of them, and usually there's three or four or five other council members there. I'll tell you what, it really opened my eyes. We have visited places I had no clue ever existed. Places like Dress for Success. I couldn't believe, when I went in there, what I learned. It's an organization that helps young women, typically troubled women, that come from troubled backgrounds, and a lot of them have one or two little children, no man in the picture, and they need to get a job. And this place does enormous work to get them a job. They have cubicles, they teach them how to use a computer, they teach them how to write a resume, and they actually dress them for success in business suits. They do mock interviews with them to help them get hired. And, and it, the, the people that come in are all races, minorities, everybody, and I never knew that existed. And then they told me the numbers of how many people they've helped and how many they see every week. I was, I was like, wow. And then we go on to the hunger programs, dinner for kids. We went out for that visit. We witnessed on, on an evening at a, a local restaurant where about a dozen volunteers are there preparing meals in mass scale, ready to go out. I think 350, 400 dinners. They do this all the time. And I, and they told us, the, the director who's running it, and they're all volunteers, nobody's getting paid, he said, did you know in Luzerne County, every day, there's over 10,000 food deprived children? I had no idea. 10, 10,000 right here in Luzerne County, food deprived. Every day, the mothers, sometimes they give them a bag of potato chips, that's all she could afford, and that's their dinner. They suffer from nutritional values. I had no idea about that. Then we go to Fork Over Love, we visited that, again, in the parking lot, and they do this every week. And five or six restaurants show up every week and donate all of their dinners. They prepare back at the restaurant, they bring them out, they box them up nicely, and they have hundreds of dinners ready, and these cars line up for a half a mile, and the volunteers hand them dinners. It, it's amazing. Quite often, it's very emotional for me. I, I just had no idea this stuff existed in Luzerne County, and I had no idea where all of this money went to. And when you see how it was spent, my God, it moves you. If, if it doesn't move you, you're not human. But there were so many more entities, dozens that we visit, and there will be dozens more. We have a few more coming up in the very near future, and I want to thank Ms. Sparage for always working to that end to get us out there to visit these places, and it really opened my eyes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lescavage.
Of course, I'm not going to be as long-winded as Mr. Thornton, but I just look out to that audience, and what I would like to thank is all the volunteers, young and old, who do what they do for that fair every year, and nobody can appreciate any of those people until they don't show up and there's no fair, whether it be an ambulance society, I don't care what it is. You're nothing without your volunteers or the people. And if there's anybody that needs to be thanked for that fair, it's those people sitting out there. Thank you.
Mr. Sabatino.
Thank you. I want to echo everybody's sentiment that Michelle Sparage has really gone above and beyond over the past six months of my experiences with her, and I really want to thank her for being supportive of new council members. I want to change the tone a little bit, and I want to talk about something that happened over the last three weeks in Hazelton. We had a really successful turnout for Rocking the Mountain, and I really want to thank manager Crocamo for bringing that event down to the southern end of the county, which is sometimes and more often than not forgotten. And I'd like to really commend the administration and the council for bringing services back down to the southern end of the county and bringing events like that to the southern end of the county. I hear complaints all the time and everywhere that there's nothing to do. Well, for six Fridays every summer and maybe possibly four next year, we have something to do all around the county. So keep that in mind, and I'd like to thank the volunteers for coming out tonight. You guys have done a great job at the fair as a vendor there. You know, we appreciate all the hard work that you guys put into making it a success. Thank you.
Anybody else on council here? Okay. Public comment, we have Mr. Griffith.
I'll try not to be as long-winded as Mr. Thornton, but anyway.
Well, that's going to be impossible.
Yeah, that's a be... One, one of the things that we went to a presentation was in Hazelton for, it was a red carpet breakfast, and the model, the mantra of that meeting by manager Crocamo was Luzerne County works, and what we heard tonight is just that. We are working hard to make county a better place in a lot of these areas that we talk about, that Mr. Thornton talked about, which a lot of people aren't aware, and these are all good things that we should always keep in mind. We, yeah, we do have some other items that are constantly a problem, but the good certainly outweighs the bad in this county. So keep that in mind as we work as council to make this happen. But on the ARPA money, if we can go back to probably 2022 or 2023, I distinctly remember Mr. Thornton bringing up the interest issue, and we see how much fruit that has given the county by one person's idea, and in collaboration with the Controller and Budget and Finance and the manager, and how that snowballed into the place where now we are getting millions, millions. That's a huge number, when you think about the money that we would be not getting had Mr. Thornton not said, hey, how come we're only getting a half a percent on the money that we have for this ARPA money? We're getting $112 million sitting in the bank, and we're getting a half a percent. And it was like startling revelation to the manager at the time, like, why would you even ask that question? Because we're losing tons, and we lost tons. And so to that point, then the Controller got involved with Budget and Finance, with the manager, and we made a concentrated effort to scan all 52 bank accounts to find out that we weren't getting any interest on most of them. And to that effort, now look at what we're getting. We're getting money that we can offset general fund dollars with, we're getting money that we could pave roads, possibly fix bridges. It's not like we don't have a place for money, because we always need money, and especially general fund dollars. So the more that we take, to Greg's point, Councilman Wolovich's point, the more we take from the ARPA fund and leave that interest available for us to use, it offsets the general fund, that's a great idea. So kudos to Mr. Thornton when we talked about that interest issue, because now we see how much fruit we got from that one suggestion from one member of council. And, and we did give a lot of money out. We gave money out to Pat Paddy's, we gave money out to a lot of these places, the Hotel Sterling, a lot of these, the project, all of these things that most people don't think is worthwhile, and then when we get a project like the Luzerne County Fair, we have hand wringing going on for 30 minutes about how we're going to give somebody $500,000 that really needs the money and can benefit this county. That's, to me, I think is kind of lopsided, because at the very beginning, we were giving it out all over the place to people that most people were saying, why did we give it to a photo studio? Why did we give it to, you know, these projects? So keep that all in mind. It all comes out at the end, and thanks to everybody who does the hard work on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Controller, for the shout out.
Yeah.
And as long as you're doing that, you could talk as long as you could.
Listen, one more thing that I had on my sheet, and I know I'm over, but I just wanted to thank the Budget and Finance Department and the manager for getting our audit done on time, which we didn't get a chance to talk about tonight, but that is huge. The state can't pass their budget, but we got our audit done on time. Kudos to the Budget and Finance Department.
Yeah, it is what it is. You guys approved it. Okay, great. Loved the fair. I actually have four booths. Like you said, last year I had one booth. During the storm, I was holding on, and people actually yelled at me because it was a storm, lightning. Remember, Jimmy? We're right there together. And actually, were you the one that said, get the hands off the metal because there's lightning? I was holding for dear life so my $2,000 tent didn't blow away. There was a Dominican kid asked me that lost everything. We lost everything. I, I lost the money that was there, I lost revenue. I loved the fair. My kids go to the fair. I love the fair. However, I, I just always think of what's needed and what's wanted, and the reason why I'm so against this is because I like to support the people that can't take care of themselves. I like to take care of the people that need it, not want it. I'm probably spoke, I spoke, speak pretty hard and probably not right, but the fair asked me last year if I wanted a 15% reduction in this one, and I didn't accept it. And I'm not trying to brag or anything, I wasn't going to bring it up. But I figured I could afford the 15%, because I thought the fair would need it. And I could ask Alan, they offered everybody that lost last year a 15% discount this year, which was very grateful. But I said, you know what, 15% isn't going to kill me, they could probably use the money more than me. And I did that. I think if everybody chipped in, I think that if we had more rallies up there, if we had more events up there, we wouldn't have to use this 65-year-old woman's that's losing her house taxes. I just think that we could have given it to, to, to other things. So I know that I don't come across correctly, but I do care about our county. I care about the people that can't take care of themselves. And when I see, I'm a poor kid, came from a poor family, so when I see rich people getting money, when I think it could go to poor people, I get hurt. And when I get hurt, I get offended. When I get offended, I don't speak right. I just think that we could do better with less sometimes. I mean, I've gone without food. My mother used to make peanut butter and jelly sandwiches every night. I, I thought she loved peanut butter and jelly, but she made sure her kids ate fish and other things and got us vitamins because she couldn't afford it. So I am against the rich getting richer, and I am against the connected being connected. I don't think it's fair. So I'm sorry if I hurt people, I'm sorry if I say things wrong, but my intent is good. And I could see when people have the skillset to generate money in another way other than using taxpayers' dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
I fight for that.
Mr. Pugh, one second, we have, we have another person on, okay. Mr. Troy? Is, is he outside?
He may have left.
He, he's, he's gone? No?
Mr. Troy?
No? Okay. All right, Mr. Mr. Pugh, are you?
Yes, thank you. Being we're still covering old topics, I will just say thank you very much for your vote for the fair. As far as some of the comments just made again, unfortunately, people make this personal. When I was a police officer, my family qualified for food stamps and reduced lunch. So instead, I worked two extra part-time police jobs, and we started what now became our company. Do we do okay? We do, and we pay a great living wage to people. I'm regularly in contact with administration here, trying to bring business and industry to this area. Our family has brought many blighted properties to your tax rolls. We do, not just say. And as far as the volunteer, 45 years ago, I joined the fire department. It was nice, someone stopped and asked, and we did that. And I continue to serve in many volunteer capacities. These people right here give much back, they do. And we talk about taking care of the community. It's easy to say, oh, you don't have what everyone else has, so I want more. Well, I, I dare to put what we donate against anybody percentage-wise. We give a lot back, we just don't have to tell everybody, we just like to do it. The fair does the same thing. The food drive, the lion's eyeglasses, these are nine nonprofits that own the fair. You're not funding the Pugh family, so you need to get over that. You are funding the Luzerne County Fair, which is made up of nine nonprofits, and these folks right here, your future leaders. Agriculture is a huge issue. Fairs generate, a 10-year-old study, $126 million in revenue for the Commonwealth that it brings back into the areas. So there's a lot more to it. So we appreciate it, and we do hold more events. Unfortunately, we kind of have to repair the grounds to do those, and we do give a lot back. These folks are out here today, many of us in this front row are there today, 93-degree heat, doing repair work out there all day. It's, you know, we all have other things to do, but it's a labor of love, because they really care about their community, and it does serve as an evacuation center in multiple things. And you know what? If someone has an idea, bring it on out. We're always open. We're always looking to do more with the community, because that's what this is about. This is your community, those are our future. And this junior fair board, many over 4H, do a wonderful job, and I can't thank them enough. And I can't wait till they take over, because I'm more in the building mode. So we want to fix it, get it ready for next generation, just like you do. So thank you to all of yous, and we appreciate it.
Anybody else for public comment in the audience? Mr. Haas?
Mr. Chair, I have something to disclose. In 1987, my mom won a first place for a spider plant in the county fair. So I just thought that was important to know for the public, just in case there's any problem there. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Motion to adjourn.
No, 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 there's, there's, there's some people on the, on the Zoom, I apologize.
Mr. Haas, when you were a child at the fair, didn't you throw ice cream at that kid and you got ejected from the fair?
I threw ice, I threw something at the clown that was there, he was terrible. Loudmouth clown.
We have a, we have a hand up on the Zoom, Mark.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me? This is Mark Raybo of Hazelton State. Yeah, once again, I'm coming to you live from sunny southern Florida, and, you know, it's 103 degrees down here and it's a heat vortex, and so I thought I'd send you guys some heat. I'm, I hope you don't hold it against me, Mr. Chair members of council and manager Crocamo, but I just wanted to let, you know, expound on what was said about being, you know, getting volunteers and also being good ambassadors of our, of our county in other places throughout the country. I just got back, Mr. Chairman, from having my hair cut, my beard trimmed, I had one of the local barber shops down here, and I had one of the barbers, he, he asked me where I was from, and I said, well, Luzerne County, I was, I live in Hazelton, and he said, oh, I know where Hazelton is, I have family in Wilkes-Barre. And he says, is the county doing anything about the, about the general election to make sure that there's paper? And I said, I can assure you, there's going to be paper there, so don't worry about it. You know, and there were, there was a gentleman there who was attending the national conference, the same one I happen to be attending right now, for developers, contractors, and other real estate professionals. And, you know, he was interested in hearing more about, you know, northeast Pennsylvania and the development going on, and manager Crocamo and Mr. Chair, I think you might be here getting a phone call in the near future. So it's, it, it behooves our county and our citizens to be proper ambassadors of our county and our community in other places in the country, because it will, it will only benefit us in the future, and it's, it's not about, you know, begrudging or bashing other citizens that have, have good intentions in our county to do good things. We need to actually do the work, put, you know, pound the pavement, as I always say, and, and hope that, you know, we can make the Luzerne County a better place, and we better ourselves in the process. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Anybody else for public comment? Motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Hosed, meetings adjourned. It is 7:28, we'll come back at 7:40. We'll come back at 7:40. Council members, it's 7:39. We're going to get started here in a minute. If everybody wants to sit back down, please. All righty. Is everybody, everybody back? All right. I don't know. She just left. Did Ms. McDermott leave? She's gone? Okay. All right, well, it's 7:40. I'd like to call the work session to order.
Recording in progress.
We already had the pledge of allegiance and moment of silence. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hoss?
Here.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Here.
Mr. Liskavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott? Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Nine of 11 present.
Okay, thank you. Any additions or deletions from the work session agenda? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's adopted. All right. Division reports.
Just a slight change in the division of reports. We highlighted all the ARPA projects so that, you know, each month, you can know which ones were ARPA-funded, so.
Oh, thank you.
Other than that, you know, obviously, if there's any questions, call, text, email, and we'll provide the answers. I'm going to piggyback a little bit about what Councilman Sabatino said. The last three Friday nights were just Rockin' in Hazleton. I want to thank all the council members who came out. Chair Lombardo, Councilman Sabatino, and Councilman Wilovich. Next year, I hope more council members come, and we can dance. There's really good food there. But more importantly, we had over 1,000 individuals each night. It got better and better and better, and we had three Friday nights that had beautiful weather. But we're moving the band north this Friday. We'll be Rockin' the River, and the band this Friday will be the Unforgettable Fire, a tribute band to YouTube. I think the park opens up at 5:00. The first band is on at 6:00, so please join us. It's a beautiful venue at the River Commons, and it really is a wonderful night. Thanks.
I'd just like to say that if you get a tribute for Earth, Wind &amp; Fire, I'm there. I'm there, 100%.
I'll be dancing.
You should see my moves back in the day.
Well, we saw a little bit of John trying to sing.
Yeah, that's right.
John, give John a microphone and...
Give me a microphone when it's the appropriate time, and I won't let it go. Listen, don't tempt me with a good time. All right. Next, we have discussion regarding... Are there any questions on the division reports? Okay. Next, we have discussion regarding the resolution providing tax exemption for new construction deteriorated areas under the Local Economic providedalization Tax Assistance Act. These poor people sat here and had to listen to all our comments at the last meeting.
Hi, Eric Watts with Flint Development. Jim Krieg with Flint Development. So we were here a few months back, I believe it was in March. I wasn't able to make its apologies about that, but presented the concept of the LERTA or the Hazleton Industrial Project that we were working on, in the Humboldt Industrial Park on the north side of Chestnut Hill and Can Do Expressway, 66-acre former mining site that's been reclaimed, and we're trying to get into redevelopment at this point. We presented the initial schedule that wasn't viewed as favorably as we would have hoped, so we went back to the drawing board and came back with this new proposal. It's an 80% 10-year abatement as opposed to the previously requested 100% abatement. So it'll bring roughly $750,000 or $725,000 of taxes to the county over the next 10 years prior to the abatement burning off. Happy to go through more details on the project, but, I mean, it's been three months, so want to be respectful of everybody's time.
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton. You have a question?
What is it again? What are you building?
So we're building two industrial facilities, roughly a 600,000-square-foot facility and a 200,000-square-foot facility. One cross-dock, one rear-load, just adjacent to the Niagara bottling plant and Humboldt Industrial Park.
Manufacturing facilities or warehouse facilities or what are... What would you label them as?
They are designed as light manufacturing slash flex facilities with distribution as well. So the larger building will probably be more distribution use. Niagara is actually very interested in it, and we're designing it to have the capability of adding bottling lines to it so when they can expand their current bottling operation. And then the smaller building generally lends itself to more light manufacturing slash assembly-type smaller users.
And the questions that always come up at these meetings for development in these industrial parks, was there any consideration given to increased traffic control locally, truck traffic control? And were there any PennDOT approvals required? And if there were, did PennDOT review the plans, and did they approve of it? And also, did the local jurisdictions approve your LERTAs or whatever, such as...
School board and township.
School board and township, yeah.
So to answer the traffic question, we did perform a full-blown traffic study. We are adding acceleration and deceleration lanes for access into and out of the site on the western portion of the site. There was no requirements, no improvements required on the eastern portion of the site. But PennDOT did review and has approved, and we're actually hoping to start work on the improvements here in the very near future.
The western portion is which road?
Well, it's currently called Chestnut, but it's going to be Timberline. Timberline's going to route all through the park there, and it's going to be a completely different name, but it hasn't been, it hasn't crossed over 924 yet.
Any other jurisdictions approve?
We've come to agreements with both the school board and the township.
And I just have one question. So that you do have tenants in mind already. I know you mentioned Niagara, and they're obviously very interested in the one building. Or is there anybody else that you have in mind that has been in conversation with you or just them so far?
Just them so far. We are a speculative developer, so we'll build it without anybody being in there, which is why the LERTA is such an impactful item from a marketing perspective. It's a direct pass-through to the users, and we don't make any money off of it. It's just strictly a marketing tool to attract the type of users that you want to see.
Any other questions by council members? Thank you.
Mr. Chair always...
Ms. Liskavage, then, Mr. Hoss.
Yeah, please. So for the record, I'm always in favor of these projects because without growth, then we pass higher taxes on to all our residents. So we have to have growth in order to keep, you know, expenses down in this county. So I'm, you know, I view these very favorable, but I'll kind of decide if you can attract the Trader Joes in this area. I'd appreciate that also.
We'll do the best we can. Yep.
Mr. Hoss?
Yeah. Hi, Eric. Hi, Jim. Are you the principals of Hazleton Logistics, or are you representing them?
I'm vice president.
You're vice president? And Jim, you are?
I'm just the director of development.
Director of development, okay. So is it a local pool of investors, then? Is that what we're looking at here?
No, we're a Kansas City-based industrial development firm.
Oh, you're the Kansas City... Okay, okay. Forgive me, it's been a couple of months.
No worries.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, I'm the exact opposite where Kevin's at. I generally think of these as disfavorable because, you know, I make the same case every time one of these comes up. It's like we're artificially injecting in the environment where we've got a lot of brownfields here around the area, and we've got a lot of properties in our towns and cities, not necessarily next to the interstate, that could really use this kind of investment. But when we give away these tax abatements, it tips the favor to these areas. And I make the same kind of arguments all the time. When the state made these LERTAs off the KOZ, the spirit of it was to be a sliding scale that you would start off with 100% tax abatement and then ratchet it up to 0%. And like, and like we see here, I appreciate the endeavor that you gave us 20% of the tax revenue back for the duration of the LERTA, which would be 10 years. But it's, again, the spirit is to really help investors come online. It's not meant to just give, you know, a gift out to people who come and invest. And like you just said, like Niagara is very much looking forward to this. I don't see where the risk is with that. If they're really looking for this kind of facility, it just seems like, why would we even offer an abatement whatsoever? Because it's evidently needed. But Mr. Thornton brought up two of the traffic problems that unfortunately, at the county level, we have to pay for. The school district isn't necessarily involved in that, and even the municipality unless it's a municipal road. So I would encourage you, is there any chance, if you talk to your board of directors, that they would go for a more sliding scale than what you have here even? Again, I hate to negotiate in public, but at the same time, this is just where I'm at.
No, I understand and I appreciate the open commentary. Yeah, we can absolutely have a discussion and see if there's any additional movement we can try to provide. It's just, we're trying to remain competitive in the marketplace, and a lot of these have been granted to other developers that have a full 100% abatement for 10 years. So it's putting us at a real disadvantage from a competition and marketability perspective if we don't have something similar. So, I mean, that's the real challenge.
And the Humboldt, I think it was when you were here, because we've had several other asks since you all came here too, but if you look at the Google Maps, that area is exploding. It's bigger than Hazleton City now because we just keep on having development, development, and it's done a little haphazardly. We're not being able to pay for some of these areas. We have some industrial parks where they're in really bad shape because we didn't do that right. We didn't do the development right. And now the taxpayers are stuck with funding all these things. So I hope you can understand my perspective. I'm sure some of my other members have some same quandaries about this, but I... But I get the long-term plan, I appreciate your interest in our area, I really do. I don't mean to come down here or try to be a loudmouth, but, you know, if you go up and down the 81 corridor, this kind of development is everywhere. It's almost, and again, no, I like, I'm not anti-development, but it's spreading around like a cancer. The development is everywhere, and we have traffic everywhere. I just think we have to be more smart about this. You know, if we're going to give out tax abatements, let's really consider all the ramifications, not just the bottom line, which is, you know, let's get it through the door and get it done. But thank you for your time, gentlemen, and happy to dialogue more. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other council members? Ms. Krishnawski?
I just had a question. Where do you expect these people to live? If we're going to have all kinds of play, all kinds of businesses here, where are these people going to live? Where are we getting these people from? I just, just like he said, there's just so many places that are coming up all around the place, but there's no housing for these people to live.
I mean, generally speaking, the labor studies that we've performed are very favorable in that area. So it says there's a supply of labor available and that the people are already there that you need. It's not like they're going to be coming in from 45 minutes away or anything like that. It's all generally within a 20-minute drive time is how you view your labor for a surrounding industrial facility. That to be said, we are working on a project in DeSoto, Kansas, right across from the Panasonic battery manufacturing plant that they started out there. And it's going to be entry-level affordable housing and kind of like a garden-style apartment complex. So that's something that we would definitely entertain looking at in the area. I'd have to do a little more research on where and how that could work, but it's not something we're opposed to. And we've been doing it, trying to find industrial sites that have the ground around it. The problem with the area there is it's all reclaimed coal mines, so you can't build residential on it. Like you can't put homes on it or apartments just based on the classifications associated with the reclamation projects. So that's a little bit of a challenge, but if you have any ideas of locations in the area, we'd be happy to take a look at it.
If I could, Mr. Chair, if anybody else wants to speak, go ahead.
I would actually love to entertain that dialogue that just took place, because if housing is on your radar and that's something that you can bring to this area, that is exactly what we are looking for. I'd be more than likely to say yes to giving you a tax break on housing versus building manufacturing facilities across the county. Those are things that we are looking for. People do not have homes, right? I thank you for saying that, like, that property is not ready, it's not built for residential housing. That's a great fact to know, so thank you for that. I'm not, as, I don't have an expertise in LERTAs and how this sort of breaks down as much. We'd had an amazing LERTA training, thanks to Brian and Patty, you guys contributed great dialogue to that space. But I think I might agree with Haas a little, like, the 80% to 0 shift is very drastic. I think like that impact, I would look for more of a sliding scale approach as well. That's something I would like to see. I think that 80% to 0 is very strong, and I don't know the pros or cons to that as far as the work that we get to do on this side. But I would love to communicate with you more about housing projects, if that's something you're willing to invest in the county. Please, I welcome you back, and I will gladly give you my phone number to continue those conversations.
I'm with you there.
Mr. Haas?
Yeah, Melissa has something to say, I mean.
Go ahead.
Again, when you mess with the free market economy, when you artificially put your thumb on the scales and you give breaks to development that offer a lot of entry-level jobs, but not necessarily family sustaining jobs, then that causes other problems. That causes the need for now subsidized housing or things like that, and low-income housing. So this is, we just have to be more long-term, I think, when we think about these things. I'm just talking to my colleagues here on the council, that, you know, it causes more unforeseen consequences when we get involved in things that, you know, when you're a business, you take a risk, and that's part of it. You take a risk, and then you grow your company little by little, and if you're successful, you eventually move to a big company. But now we see, let's develop something enormous, and then that has all these other latent effects that come to pass. So, again, you can't, you can't cheat the laws of economics and supply and demand and things like that. I'm just starting to blubiate here, so I'll be quiet. But again, I just, I think we need to have a bigger dialogue, which is why we're taking a look at the long-term plan later on this meeting. So I'd like to talk about more than, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other council members? All right. If you guys don't have anything else, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
We appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have the capital plan presentation.
Nick is going to give the capital plan presentation. I just want to commend Nick and Jim Pacora and her division in this department. And Nick especially, Nick just came on board and is really taking hold of all of our projects, both our road projects, our bridge projects, and our buildings. And he's bringing it all together, and he's putting it in a form that even I can understand. So I want to just tell Nick, thank you. You're a great part of the team, and I'm glad you're on board. We're in good hands.
Thank you, Manager Grokamo. Good evening all. Thanks for having me. Is that going to, Pete, is that going to, my presentation going to be up on there? Please. Well, this is going to be the plan for, while he's doing that, disclaimer, this is the plan for 2025 through 2027 for capital assets. There will be amendments. We found some projects that can come off, some projects that we found workarounds. Just for example, the Penn Place elevator, we found some money in the building and grounds budget. We're going to get that going rather than waiting for this to be approved. No problem.
We'll just be a second here.
All right. IT doesn't have it, but does everyone on council?
I did send it, I sent it to Ed. Do you want me to email it?
Ed has it?
I sent it to you right now, okay.
Thank you.
We have it in front of us, so if you...
Yeah, I can get started.
I was going to say, if you want to just get started with it, and then once we get it up on the screen.
Sure. Perfect.
And we'll have, I mean, it's obviously, it's in the agenda as well, so the public has access to it.
All right, to start, we have the Penn Place windows. This was an already previously approved. This was already a previously approved capital project, estimated cost of 1.1 million. Now, this estimate was gathered two years ago. As we know, inflation came in through. I'm going to get this re-scoped, still with the 1.1 million, but I'm suggesting that we use it for the third-floor windows and then the weather-facing sides of the first and second floor. And that is just a straight window replacement. Yes, Kevin?
So I took time out to go through all them rooms with the damage. I don't think, in my opinion, and we could have somebody else take a second and third look, I don't believe we need window replacement. What's happening is those window sills were never pitched.
Yes.
The water runs actually backwards, and if you look at every window that has water damage, it's from the window sill down, there's not one window leaking from the sill up, not one inch. So to me, there's a poly material that they make that we could recreate a window sill. It could be poured in a form, and it would give you the pitch, it would also seal the window sill.
We actually have a contractor coming in on Thursday, I believe, to look at that for us as well. Because if we can avoid the windows, we can reallocate it for something else.
But just for the purpose of the, when we introduced it, we wanted to keep it.
Yeah, I wanted to keep everything as is from the original plan.
But we're looking, we're investigating that.
Yes. Next slide is Penn Place restoration and repairs. Now, this is brick and mortar work on the facade, and then the budget and finance suite fit out. So renovations for the budget and finance suite, and then finishing up with the brick and mortar. Next slide. Courthouse sewers, lovely pictures of the courthouse sewer there. This has to be a full replacement of the courthouse sewer. If the courthouse sewer goes down, it's not going to be pretty, I can tell you that. That is a 1 million estimated cost.
We've been down here somewhere for weeks.
Yeah.
We shot this live.
It's not great. Next slide, I have the Penn Place elevator. Now, the parts for this were already obtained, labor for 30K, we're getting it fast-tracked, this is coming off. This will be amendment coming off, they should be starting work on this in the next week or two, which is good news for Penn Place folks. Our next slide, courthouse tunnel lighting right outside here, another great picture. This is being run by a generator right now. We're going to get it rewired, cleaned up. Just needs it, can't have people walking through there at night with no lights on. So that is an estimated cost of 10,700. Possibly if I can scrounge up some funds. Next slide, we have the water remediation at the courthouse. This is another one that was already pre-approved in years past. It was approved for 205K. There was a change order, and engineering fees weren't taken into account from the original scope. So this would just be to finish that off. Then we have, our next slide is the courts. We have courtroom repairs, $164,000 to finish repairs of courtroom seven upstairs. $1 million for the safety, security entrance for judicial services. And we have $1.5 million for the Brminske courtroom renovations, which is, they're trying to mirror floor three at Brminske to floor two with the new judge coming in in 2026.
That judge will most likely be assigned to family court?
Yes.
And I believe, I don't want to speak for the courts, but my understanding is we will have a specific family court where all family matters will be held in the Brminske building, which is more efficient and easier for not only our personnel, including the sheriffs, but also the litigants.
I just have a question really quick, if you don't mind.
Yes.
The safety and security entrance for judicial services, where is that located? Is that?
Well, we were...
Is that the entrance downstairs?
Yes, where employees come in, want just a safer spot for judicial judges, their staff to come through. We don't want them coming through where the general public are, so it's just, an idea flowed out there. Ramilda was one that requested that.
What would that entail? Is that basically this, a similar security entrance to the public's entrance?
Correct, only it'll be just for the judges. We don't publicize when the judges get threats, but they do. There are issues sometimes. This is a public building, we can't not allow people in. And a lot of the courthouses that I've been in, both here in Pennsylvania and in New York, have separate entrances for the judges and their staff. Really, they have separate elevator banks to...
Right.
Because judges are targeted now. And so we want a special entrance for the judges and the judicial staff. And at some point, I will be announcing that everybody will be going through metal detectors, whether your employee or the public, because we have to make sure everybody's safe in this building, in all our buildings. But it's a need, especially for the judges.
Okay, thank you.
Good, and my last slide here, just miscellaneous projects. Replenishing AED machines for county buildings. Pretty much every AED machine we checked in county buildings is expired, not working, so...
Well, are they, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, are they expired meaning they're not working? Or are they expired meaning like the pads on them are expired?
Pads are expired, batteries are expired, some are just not functioning. Just like in this building, we have one in the basement. So if something, if someone has an emergency on the third floor, by the time someone gets down there, gets it, brings it back up, you're out of luck. So this is just, this is to replenish in all county buildings. I think we should have one on every floor of every county building, just for safety reasons.
You could probably, when you order those, there's a possibility you can get a discount from, depending on the supplier.
For sure.
I don't have any recommendations on that, but...
That was just an estimate too, you'd think it's roughly three grand per AED, around there, so, and we need quite a bit of them. We have, is that Jen?
Yeah, Ms. Pacora, you have something to say on that? No? Okay.
I'll continue. Generators and locks at the Coroner's Building, this will be amendment coming out. We found a workaround for the generator, instead of it being $60,000, we found, we could put in a switch for $9,000, and then EMA and emergencies would bring over a generator. So that will be coming off, and a big price reduction for that. And then finally, we have the safety, security entrance for the prison for $1 million. Same echoing what Ramilda said before, we have to keep the public that's coming into the prison safe, and we have to keep our officers safe as well. Well, I don't have plans yet for that, but I would think as you walk up the stairs, metal detectors, it's just more of an update rather than a full-blown remodel of the prison. Just a modernization of the security there in the front.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
I will, I'll talk to you about the particulars, I'd rather not announce them publicly, because I don't want to put any of our COs in any danger. But there is a logic and a reason why we're doing that, and it should have been done a long time ago.
I have one, Mr. Chair, if I could.
Go ahead, Mr. Haas.
Nick, it's not related to the projects you're doing now, but I'm looking at the itemized list. Project number 44, it's the elevators modernization at the prison. I've had just recent, a couple of questions about that, and I want to make sure I asked about that. I'm seeing in the narrative, it says funds to be used in conjunction with ARPA funds to complete the project. Project expected to begin construction in 2023. What's the status of that? Could you speak to that?
Yes, in progress right now. We're on schedule to get finished late September, early October. One change order, we're still on budget and no other problems as of now.
And the change order was addressing something, because we have implemented this policy, no change orders.
Right.
This change order is because it wasn't part of the original contract. It wasn't conceived of at the original contract, and I think it's about 7,000?
7,900, around there.
7,900 dollars.
That was on our end, that was something that administration brought up?
Yes, yes.
All right, that's good.
That's over the 25 cents I said.
Yes, it is over the 25 cents.
But it will make life easier for the COs with this panel on the ground floor, so they can call up the elevator from each floor that they want to.
Now, that would be helpful, I mean, that's been a difficult project, I understand with the history of that, so.
Yes, and if, I am reworking the numbers there, so there would be amendment for that because there was some, numbers were just not coinciding with the, yes.
We're looking at 2024.
Early October.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Nick.
Thank you all, I'm staying up here anyway.
Oh, okay.
For the next one.
Well, let's move on. Discussion regarding the resolution requesting a multimodal transportation fund grant from the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Financing Authority.
All right, thanks for having me again. So this is for the multimodal for Church Road. We are requesting 2.75 million dollars to do what is 2.8 miles of road. And then we would have a local match of 239,000 and 340 dollars. Church Road, and what my philosophy is, like Ramilda has said before, we work in sections of roads. We can't just be picking a road down south and then coming up north. If we focus on sections, we will get more accomplished and please more people. So my focus right now is the Crestwood Industrial Park, Church Road area. So when... So, when we're doing drainage for Crestwood, Alec and Cabbage is gladly helping us with money for Crestwood Industrial Park roads. I want to get Church Road done, which is right on the border of the park. That way, this whole area, we could check off the list and move on. Any questions?
Is that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair?
Oh, go ahead, yeah.
Is, is that by the ice ponds, that stretch that you're talking about, Church Road?
Yes.
How far? Cause I don't, I don't see, Matt, can you tell us exactly where that?
You know where St. Jude's is, Parish?
St. Jude's, yeah.
Yes, it's, uh, it's basically on that road, on, uh, also A and R Building Supplies on that road.
Okay.
It's not anywhere near the ice ponds.
That's a different one.
Oh, yeah, no, there's a couple church roads.
Okay, I know it's, uh, they're all over the county, that's what I was looking at.
Right, it, it borders the Crestwood Industrial Park.
So, what, how many miles are we looking at?
We are looking at-
I guess in two point seven, probably two miles?
Two point seven, two point seven-three.
It's about a, a million miles or, a million dollars a mile, or?
Yes, but with a multimodal, you're going to be, uh, widening the shoulders, which is new road. So, if it was just a paving project, this would be around one million dollars. But with the shoulder widening, putting in bike lanes, you're getting into a deeper cost.
And so this is like million and it's, it's a real paving, it's not just surface, we're really getting to the nitty-gritty here.
Exactly what we just did on West County, which will be having our grand opening in, uh, August.
Yeah, this is one of, I, I just think the people really want projects like this, they really want the roads paved, they want the bridges to be functioning.
If I could, if I could, I would pave every road and fix every bridge, but that's not realistic.
Unfortunately, our roads have a very serious drainage, uh, and, and it, that needs to be taken care of.
Right.
Cause we can pave and pave and pave and pave and pave, but unless we take care of the root of the problem, we're not going to fix it.
Right, you can't have water rushing down our roads, cause it'll just erode away the paving, so.
And I'll, I'll vouch for Nick, that road is terrible right now, so.
It is. Any questions?
Any other questions by council? All right.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Yeah, all right. All right, next up, we have discussion regarding the resolution granting an easement with Giga Power LLC over Luzern County-owned real property in Hanover Township.
That one's me.
All right.
All right. So-
He wanted to use the microphone, so I said, Harry, you can handle this one.
Giga Power is looking to, it's, it's a new, uh, provider of internet services. I think it's going to be more commercial than residential. But they need to go through the Hanover Industrial Plaza to get to their main facility. So they will be, um, off the road, making some egress into the ground, so subterranean. And then they'll have little sections where they could open it up and get in to do work if they had to fix any of the, uh, digital wire. So, as a result of that, we will be paid a hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred dollars. And, uh, it is for a set period of time. So it's not a permanent easement, like we have with our water system to come in the house, the electrical. They're looking for a ten-year easement, and then they, if they need it after that, they'll renew it, they would come up for renewal.
Any questions? All right.
My only question is, is there any reason why we shouldn't do something like this? Will this set up, set us back developmental, development, regarding development or anything like that here?
No, it's off, it's off the side of the road.
Yeah, like it's a foot off the road, right?
Well, further than a foot, yes, it's not interfering with the roads. In fact, when it comes to roads that it would go, uh, where it has to cross the road, it's going to go under the road.
I'm sure it's in the contract, but if, if there's anything that goes sideways, are, are they going to cover that?
They're responsible for it, yeah.
Okay, and that's in the contractor, cause I did not read it myself, but.
It is.
All right, something I, I make sure I would do for next, for next meeting, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Attorney Skeen. All right, last, we have discussion regarding the resolution declaring the goals for Luzern County for the long-range goals, mission statement, principles, and vision statement. This is, uh, Mr. Haas.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair, and thanks, members. I mean, we, the committee, um, which comprises of myself, Brittany, Joanna, and Kevin, we just put our draft amendments on the existing long-range plan that was passed back in twenty seventeen, and it starts there on page eighty-one of your packet. And so, we just wanted to make sure you had the document to see what was originally there and what we as a committee thought would be something that the whole council could sign on to. But we want to put this out here and are very willing to accept any amendments or changes or thoughts, concerns whatsoever about the document. And ideally, we'd like to, we're going to meet on the thirty-first of this month, and, um, I thought the, the process, you could email them to myself and the chair if you want to copy the other members, that would, I have no problem with that whatsoever. And, um, we'll put that together and then bring it back to council for a, a final run-through. And, um, just want to make something that we can all sign on to. So I don't know if anybody has any questions or concerns about anything.
Yeah, I just, a couple of things that jumped out at me, and I only just briefly read through this document, but one was, um, obviously, this, you know, pertains to myself, to my full-time job.
Yes.
But it says, you know, community health and safety, and it just said timely communication and that's it, or countywide public safety plans. And then, you know, there, uh, basically, it's eliminating all the other language, which talks about regionalizing, uh, some of our emergency services, which, you know, I've had conversations with a number of council members who essentially, we would actually like to explore that option to, you know, help make the towns that would benefit from regionalized emergency services way more safe. I have a number of examples that, um, of it having been done here in Luzern County that have been really positive. And all they really need is just a little bit of a helping hand, they need somebody to guide them that has the experience, and I know we have people within our own administration that actually have been part of those plans. So, just wondering, you know, if that was something, why specifically that was, like, xed out?
We, we talked, that's a, that's very valid, John, I really appreciate that. So, we talked about what is within our purview as a county and what is not. And so, we've had some regionalization efforts, I'm, I'm on the west side, of course, or my kinks in some of our little boroughs have gotten together and that's had a little bit of success, but, um, some, it's not always been successful. But we didn't want to muddy the waters and get involved in things that is outside our jurisdiction. I mean, I still don't have a problem being a, a conduit to get different groups together, but that was kind of the orient thing, not just with this particular issue, but everything else. When this, when this home rule structure came onboard, um, in, um, about ten, ten, fifteen years ago, there were a lot of things that we thought, oh yeah, the county, we could really do this, but really, when, when we sit in the chair, you realize what you can and can't do. And so that was the reasoning for that. But, um, look, we want to make this a global document, so if, if members want to see that happen, we can certainly put that back in.
Just a question.
I think, um, you know, if you want to cobble an email together, we can do that.
I would echo the chair on putting it back in.
Sure, okay.
Any other questions, council members?
If I could just follow through on that real quick, though, Mr. Chairman? So, would it just be like returning the original language there, is that what you're looking at? Or Jimmy or anybody else has said anything?
I think so, um. I, I mean, I, I think that that actually would be, would be good to return the original language now that I read through it, especially the, the last part that, uh, speaks to the elimination of the need for state police to provide primary police services to boroughs and townships. Right now, there are a lot of boroughs and townships in the county that have that, and, and that's, I mean, not to say that the state police don't do a great job because they do a fantastic job, but they are stretched way too thin, and it's very, very difficult. If you want a, a, a police officer at your house in a tim- timely fashion in an area like that, it's, it's, it's not, I don't know what, what, if it would happen or not. So, you know, and, and that, you know, as a first responder, that has been a problem for us, um, and the ambulance responding, or the fire department responding into towns where the state police are, um, are serving that town prior to the regionalization of the west side departments, I'll say, that, uh, that I serve. And, and, um, we have had to sit and wait, basically, if it's a, a domestic violence situation or somebody with a gun, that type of thing. I mean, that, that's been, that's been very difficult, um, so I would certainly entertain just keeping the original language in.
That's helpful, cause that'll, that'll save us time at the meeting, rather than just wordsmithing things, if, if that's what you like. And anything specific, please email us, we'd be happy to hear from you. I think Mr. Thornton had something to say as well.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
Yeah, tha- thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank and applaud the committee for putting this together. It, it was probably painstaking, uh, to go through it all, and, and I thank you because it's very helpful. The only thing I, I wanted to suggest under section three point one, and I brought this up a few weeks ago. Three point one now reads, identify options for improved county correctional facilities. I, I believe we need to, to go further and beyond that in that, um, the current correctional facility we have, the main facility, is, um, headed towards doom and disaster. We all know that. It can't stand forever, that building. The infrastructure is very old, we continue to dump millions and millions into that property to repair roofs, leaks, sewers, elevators. It goes on and on and on. I, I would like to see maybe something added to that. In other words, uh, identify options for improved county correctional facilities, uh, including the possibility of regionalizing our correctional facilities with an adjacent county or counties. And, uh, just as we did with the airport, where it's located in Voca off eighty-one, uh, where Luzern and Lackawanna County share control and operation of that airport. I don't think it's wise that, well, we could look into building our own prison here in Luzern County again. I, I think it would be smart to at least explore, like many other counties do across the country, that don't have correctional facilities next to their courthouse with their judges. So what they do is, they build a little courtroom in their new correctional facility. And, uh, my vision would be if we had one prison between Lackawanna and Luzern County, where both counties would share resources and funding on an ongoing basis, it'd be a brand-new facility, stand for the next hundred years. And with a little courtroom there, like other counties and other states do, um, you would take a judge, and let's say, I think we're going to have ten judges soon, you would take a judge on a rotating basis, and that one judge would sit there Monday through Friday for one week. Then the next week, it'd be the second judge, third week, the third judge. So every ten weeks, uh, every, actually, yeah, every eleventh week then, uh, the judge would sit there for that week in that little courtroom and, and do what they have to do. A lot of counties also use Zoom, they use Zoom more than fifty percent of the time now to, uh, hold their little hearings and whatever they're going to do there with the inmate and the lawyers. So, uh, I don't see that as a huge objection, I know it's been stated as an objection here. For a couple of years I'm here, it's been stated as an objection from the judges, you know, because they're comfortable right here, as they should be. And I know Lackawanna County has judges also, I don't know how many they have, do you know, Ramilda? So, there might be, at the end of the day, nineteen judges. So one judge would sit there for a week and he wouldn't go back there till twenty weeks later. I mean, you might, you might be looking at two, possibly three weeks out of the whole year, a judge would have to sit in that one courtroom for, for a week. So, I just think it'd be, you know, without limiting us here with the statement, just add something like that, that, which possibly could include regionalization with an adjacent county or counties.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, and we did talk about that a little bit in our meeting as well, that I think that Northumberland and Montour County, I think they have done that successfully, I think they have the shared, uh, facility, I think a couple of the counties around the state do too, but definitely something to look at, and we talked about, you know, when we finally get rid of our debt, that would really be a nice priority to really modernize that, or build a brand-new one, it's, it's a hundred and forty, fifty years old, for God's sakes, goes way back. But, um, yeah, I'll, I'll write that down there, Mr. Thornton, happy to do that, absolutely.
Any other comments from council members? Ms. Krishnowski?
I would, if you can, to the promoted construction of sidewalks and trails throughout the county, I would like, um, it's under infrastructure number four? Four point two?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Uh, I, I, maybe I, um, we should be promoting more people to be outside. You know, and then I just think that, you know.
So to hear you, so promote more trail construction, more bike trail?
Sidewalks and trails throughout the county, that's exactly what you lined out, and that's what I think is very important, that we should have more of.
Could that maybe, just as with the, uh, you also have crossed out environment, but then the comment says there's new section created? Maybe it could be added to the environmental section somewhere in there?
Absolutely.
Or, you know, consider it.
Absolutely, no, happy to hear any comments.
I, I agree with, uh, Ms. Krishnowski, a hundred percent on that. I, I would love to see our county embrace the concept of more trails, people to walk recreationally in a safe manner, um, and-
Even sidewalks to make people get out of the house and walk their neighborhood. Maybe if you took your neighborhood back, there'd be a lot less violence, I don't know, it, it starts with all, every one of us, and I, I, it can't hurt to, to make it a little bit more safer, and if there's more sidewalks, people would be outside.
You're right, and this is just a thought, many places around the Commonwealth and the country have taken their old railroad tracks, removed rails to trails, and, and we even, uh, received a grant on that, we're a West Pittston Borough, uh, from the state. And, uh, ideally, I mean, we were looking over in Duryea, that Stevenson Street Bridge, and they have a trail on the other side that they're connecting with up in Lackawanna County, and that trail heads right towards that railroad bridge over the Sesquahanna River, very close to it. And we could continue that right across the Sesquahanna River, and I live right next to that bridge in West Pittston. And we have about eight miles of the tracks from that bridge in West Pittston that goes through, dissects, uh, West Pittston, Exeter, Wyoming, Forty-Fort, Kingston, and those tracks are never, ever used, I live on them. We haven't had a train going on those tracks for years. As a matter of fact, uh, we have a bunch of big trees growing between the rails all the way down. And I know that's the redevelopment authority, but I, I, just the concept of vision of us looking to promote maybe three, five years down the road, seven years, let's embrace the idea of nice nature trails.
Well, again, and I thanks, Mr. and Ms. Krishnowski for that, and Mr. Thornton, remember, you're in West Pittston, Philadelphia, F, take that bike trail all the way down the levee system, that's beautiful. Go all the way to Hanover, go all the way to Edwardsville, so take advantage, everybody, of the amenities we have here.
I'd have to go buy a bike, though.
One with a motor, right? One with a pull start.
We do, uh, and we do have some precedent for that as well, because we do, you know, the, the, like you said, the redevelopment authority, the rail authority, I think they do take care of those, uh, some of those trails.
And isn't there a trail from Luzern all the way to Pizza Perfect that it's supposed to be going up to, like, um?
Yes.
Back Mountain Trail.
I've been on it many times, back Mountain Trail.
It just stops right there, so if that could even be continued on, that'd be even nicer, too. Just a thought.
Any other comments from both, Mr. Sabatino?
Under infrastructure, I would like to add, like, I would suggest you add a four point two, update and maintain county facilities and identify any county facilities that could be, uh, repurposed and sell off county facility. Like, I think we need to have a focus on our internal infrastructure as well as, you know, light rail, which I applaud, a light and passenger rail, I think that's a phenomenal idea, but, uh, infrastructure is just more than roads and bridges, it's the buildings that we own. If we could repurpose them or identify buildings that we could sell, like, repurpose them, move into them, and sell buildings that we don't need anymore, it falls into the whole underlying, uh, theme of, you know, downsizing and making the government more efficient. So using that as a suggestion, you know, if we want to talk about it more at the infrastructure committee meeting on the third Tuesday of August, we could talk about it then, you know? Third Tuesday of August.
Thursday, Jimmy, I think, if you take a look back at three point six or on page eighty-three, I think what you're talking about was, I mean, it's been crossed out because it was in somewhere else, thoughtfully evaluate county real estate and dispose of those properties not deemed necessary? So, is that, I mean, obviously a little different than what you said.
I took that to mean the real estate that the county owns.
Okay.
Because where you moved it, it talks about delinquent taxes and-
Yes.
And real estate, I'm talking about, we need to start focusing on our, our buildings and our, and how we maintain them, and how we get, like, we're talking about the windows in Penn Place. So under infrastructure, we need to have a focus on county buildings that we use for county business.
County buildings for county business, how about like four point four on page eighty-five? Does that seem like a, an appropriate place? Cause right now, it currently says inventory fires.
Well, that talks about roads and bridges, so I, I would suggest-
But like maybe right after that, in that section, that neighborhood? So county buildings, I, could you repeat what you, what you said again?
County buildings that we use for daily county business. Inventory, um, identify ones that we do not need, uh, and sell them off, and improve ones that we do, use that money to improve ones that we do have. And keep them, you know? we do, use that money to improve ones that we do have, and keep them, you know, up to par for the future.
No, thanks, Mr. Sabatino, I appreciate that, and, I mean, we can wordsmith it at the committee, but I just want to make sure I accurately get what you're saying.
Yeah, county buildings that we use for county business.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? All righty.
Very good, thank you, council, that's all about. We'll talk to you next meeting.
Okay, I think that's it. All right, well now, public comment, we do have one slip, we have Daniel Valentine. You're good? Okay, all right, no problem. I think, Mr. Raybo does have his hand up, Mr. Raybo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to thank council for, you know, bringing back the, well, as far as, first of all, let me address what Councilman Thornton, Mr. Thornton, and the others, other council members who stated about the rails, the trails, and, and the unused rail, because I happen to be on the redevelopment authority, we have been working on that, especially the ones around Pittston, as you know, Mr. Chair, and in West Pittston, and on those, on those rails that haven't been used. We are, our director has been working on that in concert with the Pittston mayor, and also with, with D C E D on those grants to convert those rails to, or those unused rails to rails and trails. So I just want to make that clear to council and the manager and the public on that. First of all, as far as with the Hazleton situation, with the Hazleton Logistics, I would like to make the point to council that in March, I would remind council and manager about the water infrastructure in that area, at the Hazleton Water Authority, the distribution plant, and also it, the land buttresses up against the watershed land. So I think that the developer would have to get permission from D E P in order to develop on that area. I think that council needs to be aware of that, if, if it encroaches into watershed area, and also the wildlife there would be displaced, as I mentioned to you back in March, there would need to be vector control by township, Hazel Township, or by the county, or to ask the state to provide those services, and then the municipality or the county would have to pitch in on that. So, just to make the county aware, and also, I wanted to make clear to everyone that the housing needs to be developed, we need to strike a balance. We already have six warehouses in Hazleton area, there's gonna be two more proposed. There's, I think there's also two warehouses that have been constructed already, so we're in the neighborhood of ten warehouses. So there, as council members Hawes, Stevenson, and Krishnowski have said, there needs to be a balance there with the housing, and I hope to God that the county can find itself in terms of planning out a housing strategy like South Florida has, because I'm gonna show you pictures, members of council and manager and press, that'll blow your minds, because there's creams operating all the time down here. You know what they're building? They're building apartment complexes and condos. And, and it's not even funny how, how many they're developing down here.
Thanks, Mr. Raybo.
So I think that Luzerne County needs to come up with that strategy within its capital plan. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Ms. Hartman?
Sorry, I was muted.
Nope, you're good.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, we can hear you.
Okay. Elizabeth Hartman, Hanover Township. So, I have a question about the AEDs. Who did we buy them off of, that they're all expired? Like, they didn't follow up on their machines that they sold us to try to resell us pads and resell us batteries? Like, I can't even imagine how every AED that the county owns is expired, except one in the, in the courthouse. Does anybody know that? Mr. Lombardo, maybe you know?
I mean, I just know, just from personal experience, I know that, like, if an AED is old enough for the battery to expire, that's probably pretty old, and the pads to expire is different, and I know, actually, right now, depending on what style of AED, what, what manufacturer, there's a huge problem, there's a huge pad shortage right now. So, even at my fire department, we had to use our AEDs twice in twenty-four hours, we had to take one off one truck, one to put on the other truck, just to make sure everything was still in service, because we didn't have pads for it. So it, it does happen, I don't know what the situation is specifically with these, but I can imagine that possibly could be it.
Thank you. If somebody can get an answer to that, Ramilda, like, who should be checking them? I would imagine, when you check the fire extinguishers, you're checking the AEDs, they're just as important, right? So you're saving people from a building with fire extinguishers, somebody should be in checking those machines.
Well, we'll get that information to council, we'll have it for the next meeting.
Anybody else have public comment? Mr. Venus, how are you?
I wanted to come up, so Councilman Lescavage could see me nice and clear.
You have to state your name and your municipality, please.
Wait, who, who made you wear that shirt? Are you being punished?
Let me get the name out, Carl Venus, Hanover Township. First of all, these sound amazing, you sound very clear on, you know, through the computer as well. I thought I would get to, I wasn't gonna come in, but I couldn't show the video on there like I used to, I think only council members could do that, and I wanted to make sure Mr. Lescavage got a good look, you know, football season's two months away, so, but no, I just want to very, very quickly, I know this is a little off-topic, I've avoided you all like the plague, so I did want to say congratulations to all the new council members, the new administration, council chair Lombardo, vice chair Thornton, doing an awesome job, I still read about it, and I follow it pretty closely, awesome job, all of you, awesome job, it's a thankless job, so again, I feel like it gets real heavy in this room, it got heavy in this room tonight, so again, everything is, you're doing great, it's good to stay positive, so you're all doing great, Ramilda, doing awesome, as always, and it's great to see you all. I'm hungry, I'm gonna go eat, I'll chat with you all later. Thank you.
Let me know where you're going to eat, okay?
Go ahead, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Jamie Walsh, Ross Township. I'm, I'm not sure if everybody on council's aware, we have a solar facility that's being proposed for Lehman Township, and it's a close to fifty-acre solar farm, it's being put in agricultural district. There's a big meeting coming up on July fifteenth at five o'clock. I, number one, I wanted to ask if anybody else is dealing, because there's three solar farms now proposed within a fifteen-mile radius, and Ross, like Hunlock, Ross, and Lehman Township, and they're all popping up at the same time. I wanted to know if the, if the solar companies are reaching out to the county and asking anything, or if this is a private deal, and then they have to get approval by the county, or is the county just completely out of it?
I'm not receiving anything.
Okay. It's just weird, because it's just, all of a sudden, these solar farms are coming up, and there is a very important meeting at Lehman Township, if any one of you council members can make it, maybe you're, maybe not, it may be good information for future, in case one pops up in your area, but we have a presentation we're doing about the pros and cons of solar farms, and their efficiency, and their life expectancy, and so on and so forth, the damage to the environment, and so on and so forth, and there's no benefit to the local taxpayers, because the energy is sold out of state, and I just wanted to make everybody aware that that's going on, and for some reason, all of a sudden, three of them popped up within, in a matter of a few months, and it's, it's just a surprise and a shock to a lot of the residents out our way, and you probably will be hearing more about this, but I just wanted to make you all aware, that's all.
When's the meeting?
It is July fifteenth. It's a Monday, I have it right here on my phone, and it is July fifteenth at five P.M.
And it's where?
It's at the Lehman Township Municipal Building. Oh, yeah, Lehman is having a zoning hearing, July fifteenth, five P.M., previously six P.M., to approve the new solar ordinance for the township.
So this is an official, like, Lehman Township zoning board meeting?
It's, it's a hearing, and the, and the residents will be there to speak, speak up about it, and it was just, it seemed like all of a sudden it popped up, no one knew about it, and now everybody's cramming for a test in the eleventh hour, to make sure that, you know, I looked at our vision statement on there, and one, one of the things in our vision statement was to keep our, our culture and community consistent, and solar farms, just, three of them within a fifteen-mile radius, sounds very excessive, if they're needed whatsoever, so. I just wanted everybody to know, because they may be popping up in your towns, too, and this is, it just seems like there's this, I, I don't know what's going on.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
Yeah, Mr. Walsh, you, maybe you don't know the answer to these questions, because I certainly don't. I imagine these solar farms are being proposed on private properties, not township properties. And so, I would imagine the private property owner is making a deal with a solar company for either leasing, or whatever space, that they're profiting, very handsomely, whoever the owners are. Secondly, do these three townships, to your knowledge, have existing zoning laws strictly prohibiting those type of things?
So this is what's strange, some of them, some of the solar ordinances, or some of the ordinances that are out there are like a hundred feet from a house, other ones are a thousand, and the proposed one in Hunlock Township is really strange, I mean, in Lehman Township is really strange, because it's right on the border of Hunlock and Lehman, their ordinances are completely different as far as footage away from a house, very inconsistent, and, and I believe it's taxpayer money that's funding these solar industrial plants, I'm not a hundred percent on it, there's somebody else that's working on all the background, that's gonna be presenting at the meeting on the fifteenth, it should be educational, if nothing else.
Will, will the solar companies themselves be represented at that meeting?
I would, I would imagine, I know they were there last month to kind of talk about the, you know, the, the land and all that, but I don't know if they're gonna be there this time, I would suspect someone's gonna be there in the audience, but...
If it's a hearing, I would imagine that they'll be there.
Okay.
If it's a hearing.
It is, it is listed as a hearing.
And those townships and municipalities you're referring to, they have their own zoning ordinance, correct? They're not, they don't fall under ours.
Actually, Ms. Crook, I'm just looking at that right now. I'm looking at, Lehman does not, Hunlock Township does, and Ross Township does, go through county zoning, so, but I'm wondering if...
Ross and, which two?
Uh, Lehman does not have county, they have their own zoning, Hunlock, Hunlock does, and so does Ross.
Okay, then let me talk to our planning and zoning, and see where they're at.
Correct.
They don't have their own.
Lehman has their own.
And if I, if I, and I, again, I know enough about this to make me dangerous, I think the counties is like five hundred feet, but they're all like, they're all different, and so, but this is happening all across the state of Pennsylvania, there was just one defeated in Mount Joy, a four-year fight, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in attorney's fees, the residents paid, to fight this solar farm, solar industrial plant, for a lot of reasons, and I don't want to get into all those reasons now, because honestly, there's someone a lot more educated to speak on it at July fifteenth, and I just wanted to make you guys aware that this is, all of a sudden, they're just popping up all over.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Walsh.
And if I could do, Mr. Chair, it's not like, it's probably not just a couple panels on a roof somewhere, Mr. Walsh, right? It's like a farm, like you see on California, where it's gonna generate heat, it's gonna cause problems. Well, I wonder what the state has to say about that, because...
Yeah, we can certainly look into all this, that's good, especially since we know that the county actually does have some jurisdiction there.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Now that we know, okay? Anybody else have public comment? Go ahead, sir.
How you doing? My name is Daniel, I own Valentine X Studios, but, which is a photography studio in the square in Wilkes-Barre.
Can you, can you say your municipality, please? Where you live?
Oh, I live in Squaresville.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I just had, I just wanted to kind of say to Patty, I don't know how to say her last name, I really, Krishnowski, I appreciate that idea with the sidewalks, because when I'm always going to, like, let's say Walmart, I don't know if Wegmans owns privately, owns that segment, I don't know if they privately own, but I always see people that's walking on that street, and I, like, a lot of times I see children, you know, and I know for a fact, not everybody is looking on that side, you know, so that could be a potential dangerous, like, hazard, so I definitely compliment that idea, I think it's pretty cool to really think about that. That's just something I was thinking about, I, this is the first time I'm actually coming to one of these meetings, so I'm just kind of like analyzing, you know, but I wanted to mention that.
Thanks for being here. Anybody else have public comment? Thank you. Motion?
And Mr. Chair, I second that, could we motion in memory of Chris Moles, who passed away here, July seventeenth, a few years ago?
Absolutely. All right, there's a motion, a second, all in favor? Opposed, meeting is adjourned, love a moment of silence. Thank you very much.